This meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, April 27th. On, will we please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation right behind you, right out those double doors behind you, or out through these doors here around my left, down the stairs and out the back, and please, if there is an emergency, walk away as far as you can from the building. Thank you very much. The Secretary, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo is absent. Kieran Majboudar.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grollow, absent. Christian D'Antonio, absent. And Nicholas LaFakas.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show, Commissioner Alamo was not able to make it tonight, so Commissioner LaFakas will be sitting in as a full-time member for all the hearings tonight. Make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting of April 13th.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, to accept the minutes of April 13th, our regular meeting. Is there any discussion, any amendments that need to be made? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of our regular meeting of April 13th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record showed it was unanimous to accept the minutes. Everybody has a copy of the Town Attorney's Report from April 24th? Okay. Now we'll move on to public participation, but before we do that, I would like to entertain a couple of motions here to change our agenda a little bit. I would entertain a motion to move from new business item C, CGS 8 dash 24, to be item B under Presentations.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, to move, let me get back here again, 11C to be 8B. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also entertain a motion to add something to our agenda tonight under Other Business, item B, and that would be to amend our P&amp;Z in-house rules.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley, to add an agenda item under Other Business, item B, discussion and adopt a change to our P&amp;Z in-house rules. Thank you very much. Seeing none, now we'll do the public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision in the commission may be pending, and that also includes any pending legal activity. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and address the Planning and Zoning Commission? Is there anyone who would like to come forward, the Planning Commission? Yes?
May I just ask a question? I have, like, something to say about something on the agenda. Oh, no.
This is not the part to do it.
Okay.
Sorry, but fine, the question. Anyone else? Seeing none, participation is closed. Move on to the next part, which is a bond release, Mr. Secretary? Whenever you're ready?
Yeah, item seven, bond release for public hearing number 2952, Connecticut Organics, 18 Mullen Road, landscape and erosion sedimentation control bond release request.
Any discussion? Staff want to add any questions to this bond release?
Just want to make sure I get the numbers correct.
I did see here that our ZO did approve this. He went out and took a look at the property, and he is recommending that we release this bond. So having said that, is there any questions on this? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the landscape bond in the amount of $2,711 and the erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $6,500 to CML Realty LLC owner, Connecticut Organics LLC applicant submitted under public hearing number 2952 for 18 Mullen Road, map 016, lot 0051.
Motion made, seconded by Commissioner LaFakas. Motion made by the Secretary, seconded by Commissioner LaFakas. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I believe we probably do a roll call at this. Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Kieran Majboudar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
And Nicholas LaFakas.
Four.
But the record shows unanimous to accept the release of this bond erosion. Thank you. Moving on now, we're moving on to the presentation, and we're fortunate tonight to have our Town Manager with us to give us this presentation on the proposed CIP budget for the upcoming fiscal budget. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I had provided to you in advance of your meeting a cover memo, as well as what we like to call our working spreadsheet.
Is the mic on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So to just provide a quick overview of what was provided, we have our CIP schedule, which is, at this point, a proposed schedule. It has not gone through the entire deliberations process yet with the Town Council. We have it divided into categories, and there's a few that I'd like to call to your attention based on the two green columns that appear in the center, where you see fiscal year 24 schools included and fiscal year 24 schools not included. If you notice, there are not many items that appear in the schools not included column, which is basically the one that we're actively working on. And that is because, as you are probably aware, the Town Council and the Board of Education is actively pursuing a look at our elementary school facilities. And in doing so, we have prioritized life safety code improvements only during this period of time when we're analyzing what is eventually going to happen. That will be going out for a study, and it will be something that will obviously be back here, hopefully in the near future. So that accounts for not a lot of expenditures in that area. Moving down, we have some miscellaneous public works. We have some department water pollution control issues, which are funded out of their own non-recurring fund. And then we have some recreation projects. And then we obviously have some that are good preventative maintenance projects, including some electrical distribution upgrades, replacement gates, those types of things. It's an ambitious list. We are trying to catch up in terms of some of the preventative maintenance. We also were very fortunate last year to be able to use some of our ARPA funds in order to front-load some of those projects and get a majority of them done, or combined that ARPA funding with other money in order to fast-track those projects. So at this point, there are definitely going to be some cuts to this. I can't anticipate where they're going to be, but we do have some difficult budget decisions to make, and the CIP list will be part of those deliberations over the course of the next 10 days. I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any specific projects that have piqued your interest, or anything in general about the CIP strategy.
You're not going to have questions? Just two. I thought the Orlando Drive culvert thing was already done. Apparently, it's not. And then the other one, it's the line item, 10 police cruisers outfitted with equipment. Now, is that 10 new cruisers? Because it wasn't clear. So, those are it.
So, the police cruisers are constant on the CIP list, as many of you are aware. Those cruisers are not like our typical cars. They are used 24 hours a day for all three shifts. So think about your own vehicle and multiply that use times three times. So they do wear out quickly. We are also having supply chain issues, so we are trying to stay ahead of the vehicle replacement schedule that our fleet maintenance division has in place. That being said, the request was 14. We looked at doing 11 this year. It is down to 10, and I think that there's probably some opportunity for movement on that in the next week or so as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've had a couple of questions. And just in case, for some of the Commissioners who aren't familiar with this, I know Commissioner Holinsky and I are, is that this kind of is a moving target. I mean, even though we approved this, if we approve it tonight, I'm certainly advocating we do, the Council can make changes going down the road. This is just a synopsis of what they would like to do. But I just had two quick questions for you, Madam Town Manager. The annex has a generator now? Because it says annex generator replacement. And I'm glad to see the sign here, but I never knew the annex had a generator in all these years.
I believe it's original to the building.
Oh, okay. That's probably not in working order, probably.
Probably not.
Okay. And is there, and I'm also glad to see on this list at least a discussion of replacing the track and turf over at the annex. I'm not sure you're going to be able to pull that off, but it is in pretty bad shape.
I brought a piece of the turf with me that you can easily peel off, trip on.
Yeah.
That is in terrible condition. And as you know, there does not, the new JFK school does not have a track, so they are there as an academic sports program as well. I don't know what to do about that, because the turf field is actually beyond replacement schedule as well. The actual track itself is crumbling.
Yep.
But unfortunately, when we are in an environment of needs versus wants, I just don't know the fate of the annex track and field.
Again, but thank you for at least having it on the list. I can personally attest that the condition of that is atrocious. And the other question I have for you, and again, maybe I missed it last year, and I know it's a moving target. When this was presented to us last year, I had the town hall basement upgrades in there, and I noticed that it seems it's back on again, so I would take it that those funds probably had to be reallocated to some other priority projects.
Is this for the bathroom renovations?
Yes.
So the bathroom renovations, there was money from ARPA that was put into having someone come in and tell us exactly what we need to do. As you know, this is an older facility, and there were some concerns about the existing system and how, and what we would find, so to speak, on the ground floor. I think you're well aware, as the taxpayers should be aware, that there's been some septic issues and sewer issues. So we didn't know what we were going to find when we uncovered it. I do believe that that project was not as bad in scope as we thought, and so we are prepared to do that, but probably in a sequenced way.
Sure.
The first floor, second floor, and third floor, in order to try to manage those costs.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that information. Any questions for the Town Manager on this? Commissioner Majboudar? Here, Mike.
Yeah, Madam Manager, only a comment. I like the idea of having this budget, as it progresses to its final conclusion, to be on public information website, the town website. It's a great idea. It'll be much easier for the public. When will that happen approximately?
So what the Commissioner is referring to, for those who might be viewing from home, is that the town has used some of its ARPA funds to contract with ClearGov, which means that all of these projects are going to be superimposed over a map where you can hover, click, see the project, see the funding source, see the amount, see the schedule, see the contractor, and all of that. It's an attempt to increase the transparency of how we do expenditures in projects, also as a source of information, but also for our own purposes, so that we can be accountable for the timetables that we attach to those projects. Unfortunately, we did contract and sign that contract after the first of the year, which coincided with the closure of the last fiscal year, the audit, and the beginning of the budget. So we have just completed the last phase of information that we needed to give to the ClearGov technical staff for uploading. So I am hoping, fingers crossed, that that will be available, at least in the capital improvement project section and the ARPA section, around the time that we're adopting the budget, so people can get used to using it. It will then continue to grow in terms of the substance over the course of the summer, and then will be maintained from that point forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town? Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah, question on non-DPW capital projects. Could you please explain, what is the EPD street camera project in specific detail? What are those cameras at intersections?
Yes. So we have a, oh, my God, I need new glasses. We have a very ambitious program. So what section is that under? The DPW?
It says non-DPW capital projects. Last page, right in the middle.
So the EPD camera, we work with them with actually several departments. The Housing Authority is a partner, Public Works is a partner, and every year, we try to expand the cameras in order to facilitate traffic control. Many of you may be aware that we have a very extensive division within the Police Department that is able to maintain a watch on several intersections, and I'm not going to say much more than that, but it is an extremely handy tool. In fact, the Chief forwarded me a little bit of video the other day. There was a very serious motor vehicle accident involving a motorcycle around the 190 Hazard Avenue, North Street. Those cameras were able to, from that angle, show everything that happened during the course of the collision, but also leading up to it. So it's an invaluable tool for us. I have a police radio in my office, and it's a great portal to the community, and oftentimes you will hear the dispatchers saying, "The car is heading south on Elm Street. It is now turning into the Kohl's parking lot. It has made a U-turn. It is now approaching I-91." And so the ability to track, whether it's catalytic converter thefts, which we've been able to do, shoplifting at Costco, you can hear all of these calls coming through, and with the aid of our camera system, which is in all parts of town, including Thompsonville and the main routes, we have an ability to actually achieve a very, very low crime rate, because we are able to make arrests. Not only that, from an insurance standpoint, we're able to assess and make determinations instead of the he-said, she-said type of situation that you often come to. And when it comes to major life and property damage, these are invaluable tools. So we are looking to expand upon that in certain areas, and so every year, we put aside some of that money so that there can be some level of expansion where we see that there's some gaps.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Town Manager on CIP? Haven't seen none. I would entertain a motion to accept the CIP presentation tonight as affirmative. Is there a motion? Commissioner LaFakas? Motion made by Commissioner LaFakas to accept the Town Manager's CIP presentation is full. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I don't think we need a roll call on this. All those in favor of accepting the Town Manager's CIP in the positive signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Current? Aye. But the record shows unanimous to accept the CIP proposal. Thank you, Madam Town Manager.
And just as a closing comment, as this list is revised and finalized, we will forward a copy to you at the end of the process, so that you could at least have it and use it as a communication tool to kind of track some of the projects that you might be seeing in a future format. I also was remiss in not saying that we are very aggressively pursuing grants, so you may see some of these projects move off of the CIP list with a different funding source in order to really leverage our resources to the best of our ability.
Thank you. And honestly, I forgot to mention that when I was previewing this list, and no one else mentioned it, it seemed to be in keeping with the POCD in entirety, so again, everything seems to be running in sync, so thank you. So now we'll move on to CGS 824. Whenever, Secretary's ready?
Yes, item under new business, CGS 8 dash 24. I'm sorry, public, no, we're at...
We moved it to public participation, Presentations B.
Under new business, I'm sorry. Yep, it would be public hearing number 300140, Edgewood Drive?
Nope.
Nope.
Which?
Look for C, under 11. C, CGS.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, CGS 8 dash 24, 810 Enfield Street. Request for the Enfield Town Council for a report pursuant to CGS 8 dash 24 regarding proposed purchase of property known as 810 Enfield Street, map 29, lot 1. Robert plus Sherry Alamo, owners BG Zone.
Thank you. Madam Town Manager, the microphone's all yours.
Okay. So in keeping with the fact that there's never a dull moment here at Town Hall, this opportunity arose rather quickly within the last several weeks, and the Town Council made the decision to make an offer to acquire 810 Enfield Street. Apparently, there was some interest in this a couple of years ago. It didn't work out in terms of the negotiation. It is back on the market, and it is without any encumbrances, such as tenant leases, et cetera. So at this point, the Town Council decided that it was going to be an investment that they wanted to make in order to achieve the final piece of what the campus would look like, including Town Hall, that building, the Enfield Express, which is the next building over, but also with some deference to what they're trying to achieve here as part of the Higgins Park campus. So as you know, the Bandshell is coming in. We have some other amenities planned for the park, and we recently announced that we're doing an every Tuesday night summer concert series at the new Bandshell. The attempt is to draw people to Thompsonville and create a sense of community and a social gathering hub right here at Higgins Park. So this building is going to figure into a couple of different plans. One is that we are a little bit out of space here at Town Hall in terms of not as much the number of employees, but storage, meeting space, requirements for retaining files, which is somewhat onerous for some of our departments. We have some load restrictions in the attic. There's not much more that we can put up there. We have off-site storage at Iron Mountain. We also store some items at the annex. Not all of these are within the parameters of what you're supposed to do in order to be able to access and touch records within a certain amount of time. So there is that. Obviously, we are very squeezed with the Planning and Zoning Division on the top floor as well, and we thought that it might be appropriate for some type of movement among some town agencies, planning being one of them, but also we have a very good problem at Stowe in that we are at capacity with all of the programs that we're offering there. And as the Superintendent of Schools and I often joke, one of us is going to have to move, and we're going to fight out who has to and who gets to stay. I told him I have the bigger budget, so that he should probably think about alternate locations. That being said, that space becomes attractive as kind of a moving piece of, a little bit of breathing room in terms of what we might want to do there. We also have the issue of the probate court. The probate court has changed in how it administers itself and the cases that it sees. It's not just your normal probate and estate wills type of thing that it was many years ago. There are custodial issues, there are all types of family issues, and oftentimes, you will see those issues spilling out into that top hallway. There is really no appropriate place for those families and attorneys and guardians ad litem, whatever the issue might be, to gather, to organize themselves, or maybe have just that space in order to do what they need to do. So there is also the thought of approaching the other regional towns that share our probate court and maybe moving that function to that building as well. There are other towns, but there's not much of a funding mechanism, but Enfield is the 63% user of those probate services, and all the other towns are very small in their percentage and the budgets of what they contribute accordingly. In fact, Union, which is the smallest user of the regional court, sends $500 every year, and that represents their part. So if we do this, it would be to the benefit of the majority of Enfield anyway, and it would be a good thing for us here at Town Hall. So that's where we stand with that. It was a very sudden issue. We have had great conversations with Mr. Alamo, and he is willing to meet all of our terms and schedule a closing date in the very near future if we're able to get an appropriate referral from the Planning and Zoning Commission to have it come back to the Town Council, to be blessed.
Thank you. Very nice overview. Thank you. And that's, I think, if I can, Town Manager, it was very nice to give us all that detail, and that's one of the reasons why we don't have a written-up detail that we normally get, because this is moving pretty quickly. So appreciate the detail. And also, if I can, I can personally attest to the space issue here at Town Hall. Most of you know I have a, wear a different hat also, and especially the attic situation with all the records stored up there. So there definitely is everything she said to, I can certainly personally attest to. So is there any questions? I know we don't have anything, we're going to have to kind of make the resolution to if we decide to approve or reject this on kind of on the fly, because we don't really have anything written up. Is there any questions on this, to the Town Manager on this particular issue? Seeing none, I will have to kind of make something up a little bit on the fly here, I think, Mr. Secretary? Leave it up to you. Do you know who to hear to?
Try to wing something.
Try to wing it, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve referral to the town of Enfield regarding CSGS 8 dash 24 for 810 Enfield Street. Request for the Town, Enfield Town Council regarding proposed purchase of property known as 810 Enfield Street, map 29, lot 1. Robert and Cheryl Alamo, owners BG Zone, to make a positive referral.
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella to make a positive referral to the Town Council for the purchase of this building. It was seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Louis Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Kieran Majboudar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Nick LaFakas.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
The record shows unanimous referral. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight. Now we'll move on to new public hearings, PH 3060ZA.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing number 3060ZA, 242, 274, and 284, Brainerd Road. Application for a zone change from R44 to MFHD, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC applicant Anthony Triano Jr., plus Petronella, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC owners, map 77, lot 68 and 67, and map 62, lot 319, R44 zones.
Thank you. Can you hold on a second, please, applicants? Secretary, a statement? Yep.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this application and the preceding application, PH 3061 as well.
So let the record show that Secretary, Commissioner Petronella is recusing himself from PH 360ZA and from PH 361, and second Vice Chair, Mr. Gray, will be the Secretary for this, two applications. If this guy's giving me a second, so we can move some paperwork around here. Can I have his red folder?
I just got some.
You don't need it? Okay. Okay.
He's good.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. Identify yourself for the records, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, my name is Attorney Paul Smith. My office address is 27 South Main Street, Menzalawas, Connecticut. I'm here representing the applicant and owner, which is Washington Associates of Enfield LLC. Also with me to my left is Dana Steele of Giarrusso and Associates, the civil engineer on this project, Frank Triano, who is part of the ownership of Washington Associates. Also in the audience with us is Dave Ziyak of FA Hesketh, who did the traffic study, which is the subject of this parcel. Just by way of sort of brief introduction, Dana has put up on the screen the parcel. It's a approximately 20.92 acre parcel located on the corner of Brainerd Road and George Washington Road. It is currently zoned, an R44 parcel with an SRD approval, SRD, Senior Residential Development Approval, which is sort of an overlay on this parcel. The prior approval was for 42 elderly apartment units. We are seeking tonight to rezone this parcel, to construct 42 market-rate, single-family, detached housing units. By way of history, we were before this commission in November of 2021, seeking a text change amendment to the MFHD zone, and that amendment was approved by this commission. So you're probably, if you were sitting at that point, somewhat familiar with what we're going to talk about this evening, because again, we were seeking specifically for this parcel, the text amendment, so that we could request the rezone. So we're sort of in the third stage of this process. The first stage was the text amendment back in December of 2021. The second was... The second was Dana went with the owners and got the necessary wetlands approvals for the single-family units that we're proposing. And so the third and fourth stage of it, if you will, will be, one, seeking a zone change for the parcel, and also the subsequent public hearing, which is on tonight, which is a hearing on the special use permit for this site, given the, if the zone change is accepted by the commission. So with that, I'm going to sort of turn it over to Dana at this point, just to sort of give you an overview of the parcel and what's surrounding it in terms of the zone change. We can, we are certainly prepared to discuss with the zone change, whatever the commission wants in terms of what we're proposing for use, but you will get a lot more specifics on that at the special use permit hearing, which is the second part of this. So with that, Dana, if you could just sort of overview the parcel and what's around it and the zone change we're requesting.
Sure. Thank you. For the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates. We prepared the map, which is on the screen and on the board here to my right, that is the zone change application. As Attorney Smith mentioned, the parcel consists of three parcels that were merging into a single parcel, just under 21 acres. It's currently zoned R44. All the properties around it are also zoned R44. That's the purple color that you see surrounding the subject parcel, which is kind of a brown color. And then all the properties on, to the west of George Washington and to the north of Brainerd are in the R33 zone and are residential, for the most part, single-family residential properties. Some of the exceptions are at the southwest corner of the property, though it's zoned R33, is a commercial development. There's a convenience store and a restaurant in a small plaza right at the corner of, southwest corner of Brainerd and Washington. Across from the property to the northwest is First Baptist, a place of worship, and St. Martha's is also located on Brainerd Road and has a secondary access off of George Washington. So to the south of this development, there is a rear driveway access to St. Martha's. So those are some of the unique uses in the neighborhood. The rest is a single-family residential. There is a utility parcel as well, just to the east of us, directly abutting us to the east, there is a water tower owned by the Connecticut Water Company. So this property is located within the aquifer protection area of wells of the Connecticut Water Company, so, and we did notify the Water Company of this application. If you, if you'd like to see any details about the plan that's being proposed, I'd be happy to go into that. Obviously, not getting into the kind of detail we will when we move to that presentation, but if you'd like a brief overview of what's being proposed, I can conceptually show that to you.
No, later is fine. The only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is I would note for the record, Dana did an excellent letter back in March, dated March 7, 2023, with regard to the applications, and in there he cites the current POCD, Plan of Conservation and Development, and the future POCD, I think, which goes into effect at the end of May, so about 30 days from now. So we might as well talk a little bit about that, too, since it's going to be your POCD going forward, that this plan really sort of, in both POCDs, kind of addresses what is identified as a need for this town, which is sort of a creative way to get what we would consider, you know, good market rate but affordable housing. And the concept here, obviously, is what we're proposing, because it's, if you look at the text change we did to the multifamily zone, the only thing that's allowed is single-family detached dwellings with a maximum of two units per acre, developable acre. So this is not, this is not a rezone that sort of opens us up to apartments or even condominiums with multiple units per building. It's really strictly limited to single-family detached. So the concept is, if you will, I would say is a private subdivision, if you will, right? Where the roads are sort of maintained and controlled by an association, not the responsibility of the town. But at the same time, each unit is separate as a single-family unit from every other unit, and there's a requirement in there that they all, they each have sort of their own individual, if you will, backyard exclusive space, whether you do it by easement or deed or some sort of limited covenant in your common documents, what we would call planned unit development documents. But the concept here is, when you rezone this, it's really limited to that use. It doesn't expand futuristically to, you know, we want to put apartments or, as I said, multifamily buildings of any sort. The text change we did is strictly limited to single-family, again, detached dwelling. So I want to emphasize that in terms of the change. We're sort of not, you know, sort of opening, if you will, Pandora's Box here. We carefully designed the text change last time around so that it could comfortably maybe fit other 20-plus acre parcels in town, but do it in a way that, you know, it develops basically what you would, you would look at as a private subdivision, if you will. And again, it, the idea is to be more environmentally responsible, maybe clustered a little bit more than you might a regular subdivision. And again, the burden for the road, for the maintenance of the road and that sort of stuff falls on the homeowners, not on the town. And the trade-off is you allow sort of a little bit more clustering and a little bit more density, but not much when you're talking two, two units per developable acre. So that's, that's the concept. We think it'll work very well here. It's a little bit of a change from what was approved as the SRD, but not really a substantive change in many ways.
I think that's the key. If I can just educate myself, I visualize it here. Basically, instead of having one of the older, over 55 communities, and we have three or four of them in town, basically, this is pretty similar to that, except it's for family-oriented and not just for over 55.
Exactly. We think the market would more readily support that at this point. And again, it is a way to, it's a way for somebody to look at it as an entry level as well. It might be for people over 55, it might be attractive, too.
Sure.
But, but we didn't want to limit it at this point. The marketing strongly suggests that, you know, it wouldn't work as well. So we think this would be a great project. It'll be very low impact. It's designed for low impact. It's got open space. So I think it works very well, and anyone that's familiar with the text change knows that there are a bunch of criteria that we have to go through in terms of open space, in terms of some amenities and that sort of thing, to try to make it a good project. Go ahead, Dana. I'm sorry.
No. If I could just add on to that, again, for the record, Dana Steele, just to keep in mind, we came in with the text amendment to look at removing the age restriction on this, but the property in its R44 zone does allow for this type of development at the same density that we're proposing, but with the age restriction. So if you were not to approve the zone change, the project could still move forward with the same size development under the, under something that was approved by the commission back in 2005. I realize that approval's expired, and we would have to return. This is a, just a minor modification from what we were going to approve. Also, I wanted to note, make clear that your MFHD zone does allow for apartments as well. However, for apartments to be allowed, the regulations require a 60-acre parcel, which this is not. So therefore, if you change the zone, we couldn't come back in with an apartment application because we don't meet the area requirements for apartments. So I know that's sometimes a concern with zone change, that we, you change the zone, but then something else comes forward. But we're really, and this is sort of unique, because there's really nothing else that we can come forward with other than, than this single-family detached type development, and we can't come in with more density either, because that's what, that we're limited to by the current regulations. So I think that that provides some limitations and some safeguards when you're considering a zone change. Just like to point that out.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions, Dana or I or Mr. Triano from the commission.
Commissioner DeGray.
I do have a question about the traffic, and they're saying it's lighter than it used to be. I go through that intersection all the time, and there's tractor-trailers, because we now have three big warehouses, plus Martin Brauer's garage is further down the street. So I'd like to know when this traffic study was done, because I didn't see any car counters at any time.
We do have Dave Ziyaks who can probably speak to that.
Right. Thank you.
From FA Hesketh. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Dave Ziyaks. I'm a professional engineer with FA Hesketh Associates. And we originally did the traffic study for the project that was approved back in 2005, so we basically updated our study to today's situation. And yeah, the numbers have dropped a little bit in gross numbers. I wouldn't say it's a substantial drop, but that's what the numbers show, and we actually did new manual counting at that intersection recently. And so our own counts verify what the state's counts are up in that area. But again, I wouldn't, you know, put a lot of effort or a lot of, you know, attention to that, to that slight drop in the numbers, but it's true. And it may, the character may be changing, and like you're saying, some of the vehicles may be going to tractor-trailer type of vehicles, but the number of vehicles has actually dropped a bit.
The reason I brought this up is because it says it's in this part packet.
Okay.
Second page.
Yeah.
Discussion of factors, second paragraph, in light of the elimination of major traffic generator.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, because I was in my next one, the traffic, address in more detail in the next one. Go ahead, please. Feel free to continue.
Okay, because like I say, I go through that at least once or twice a day. So I do notice a bigger increase in traffic. I've lived in that neighborhood for 61 years. I know the traffic has changed, so that's why I wanted to know. And how many days of manual counting did you do? Because different days have different flows.
The, I think it was two days that we actually did the manual counts. We typically, you know, get two days' worth of data.
Okay.
And again, like I said, I wouldn't put too much into the statement that the traffic is, has dropped significantly. That's, that's not the case. The numbers are down a bit, but again, I wouldn't argue that the characteristics of the traffic have changed. Simply, you may have gone from car vehicles to truck vehicles. But yeah, that's, that's about all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's probably going to come back up in the next application, so don't go away.
Sure. We're here.
Any other questions? I had, I had one question more for staff. If I can, any analytical framework part, because I'm a little confusing, so maybe you can enlighten me. I'm just going to read what you have here. The prior approval in 2005 and a subsequent regulation amendments both create precedents that should be considered in evaluating this MAP amendment application. Is that something you want to expand on, or is this something I should just not even have mentioned?
I think it was just to provide some general context for the members. Typically, when a property has been approved previously for a project, that's evidence, if you will, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, at least at that time, had made certain determinations about whether or not that, that project and that location at the scale that was proposed was appropriate and met the regulations in effect at the time. So if that project doesn't go forward, and then a subsequent application is made for a very similar project in terms of scale, land use, et cetera, all of those different things. Generally speaking, it, it's important for the commission to go back and to use that prior approval kind of as a reference point, if you will, as far as the evaluation of the current project. If the current project were for a different land use, if the current project were two or three times the scale of the prior project, or if there were factors that had changed that you included in the analysis, then it's a little bit of a different situation. So in terms of this one, since the scale is the same, the land use is the same, it's basically the same project from 2005, with the exception of the age restriction, I think. I think it's prudent for you to take a look at the analytical, these factors, and I listed a number of them in the memo, transportation and utilities and a variety of other kinds of things. And if they're, if in your opinion, based on, you know, facts and the record from reputable sources, technical people and otherwise, there have been material or substantive changes in those factors, then I think it's perfectly legitimate to consider that in your overall analysis. We didn't, at the staff level, we really didn't see that there were substantive changes, and we had spoken to, for instance, the town engineer about the utility issues and things, and there really, there really are no utility issues and that kind of thing. So that's really what that was set out to do.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
We're reading through here. That's why I asked. I didn't really see any showstoppers or things that really raised the flag.
No, we, we didn't either in that regard. In terms of the zone change, now this slight plan, which we'll talk about later, is a different, different matter to a degree.
Yeah.
Certainly for the zone change analysis.
Okay.
That was appropriate.
Any questions now? Just one. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this project? Please feel free to come on up.
I want to have this one.
So go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a seat and just make sure the mic is on, and you just have to identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Hi there. I'm Dr. Stacy Olivera. I actually own the property at 286 Brainerd Road. So I would, I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding this project. I bought my property because of the landscape, because of the land that it has. I mean, it's 1.3 acres, and for those residents who have been here for a long time, just 10 years ago, it was a rundown shack cottage, and it got flipped back in 2016, and then I had the privilege of purchasing it in 2020. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay. Take your time.
Thank you. So I know the neighboring land. A lot of people use that area, and I understand the sand pits, oh my, there was just a ton of individuals there this past weekend, and for whatever reason, but I feel like that land is a avenue for people to kind of, I don't know, reset and allow for their mental health to maybe settle. Times are hard. I don't know if mental health has really, like, settled since the pandemic, and, and I also know that there's hunting land right behind that 284. So this one unfortunately has residential for families, and so I don't know if allowing families with children is the most appropriate for this lot. So I don't know. I understand it was pre-approved in 2005, but Enfield has grown a lot since then, just in the past three years. A lot of land has been turned around to commercial and some residential, and I, what are we doing in terms of preservation, conservation of land? Because eventually, this land is going to run out, and then I don't know if we are able to go back and correct things.
Thank you. We, this is not a give and take, but if you wait maybe during our discussion, you'll hear some of our comments.
Okay. Perfect.
Are you all set?
I think so.
That's all you wanted to add to the record?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a couple notes. Anybody else would like to speak for or against this application? Anyone else like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none? The applicant come back up or one of the representatives anyways? Does staff have any more comments or concerns or anything they'd like to bring up on this application?
Not really at this time. I, you know, I will just say.
I, you know, I will just say just shortly, it basically is a 42 parcel project that was approved and not built. This is just a 42 parcel for a single-family dwelling unit. Same thing.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with a comment? I think I'd just like to address a couple of things. One is certainly, I think this board is definitely aware of the conservation issue is going on in Enfield. We try to address some of those in our P O C D, and we're cognizant of that. And I can confirm that the Conservation Committee is working feverishly on some new things that they're going to be presenting to us or to Town Council in the near future. So it definitely is something that's come up and we're well aware of. My own personal opinion, if I may have. I said this was pretty much a pre-approved project before in an area I know pretty well. Gosh darn, we're going to lose the sign area. But having said that, basically, in this case, it's changed really just to be more multifamily instead of over 55. So that's just my personal comment, even though I do appreciate the young lady's concern. And we, you know, we did hear you loud and clear. But in this case, at least my personal opinion, it's need to go forward. So that's just, as your chairman, my idea with this zone change. So Commissioner Higley?
Wouldn't that be a topic more for the second half? This is a zone change, specifically a zone change.
Yeah. Yeah, I decided I might comment so I don't lose them.
Okay.
Got a lot of things going on here tonight. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just several quick comments. I don't want to delay your closing. Two things. One, and again, I guess this goes maybe more to the secondary in response to the comment from the public. I mean, if you saw our design, obviously, we're trying to be sensitive to the streetscape there and the preservation of that, if you will. There's no, you know, a lot of the streetscape is left sort of untouched. I think Dana's, would be an accurate way to say it, right? As it was, I think, with the original one. So there's a lot of, you know, the streetscape for those people on the roads is pretty well preserved. Okay? And I would note that prior and this one. And the second comment is really a technical one because we have these two applications flowing, but, you know, together. In terms of closing the hearing, we're absolutely fine with that. We're concerned about effective dates and the approval, if there is one of the special use, and whether, you know, that has to fall after the effective date of the zone change. And that's something we want to make staff aware of that we, and I think Dana's discussed that with you, but...
No, I haven't.
Okay. But, you know, that's an issue that sometimes rolls around in my head when we do these, you know...
Yeah, it rolls around in my head as well.
Run right after the other, you know?
It's, when they're done concurrently, it makes it a little different, you know, kind of the chicken and egg...
Yeah, right, right.
...tundrum kind of thing. So the effective date, the specific effective date, I just put a date in and recommended a date, June something or whatever it was. I don't have any, staff doesn't have any particular druthers one way or another as far as a specific date for if, if they're inclined to approve the MAP amendment.
Right.
The only thing is that the MAP amendment can't be effective until the map's filed.
Right.
We have the appeal period to deal with after publication. So I'm still kind of up in the air in terms of the solution as far as the site plan part, if that kind of follows on. So maybe we can talk about that more during the site plan.
During the site plan.
Okay, absolutely. I just wanted to raise it now in case, you know, we needed to sort of do something now. But I agree, I just wanted to sensitize everybody to that.
Sure.
Sort of going forward.
Okay, we'll get that during the site plan portion.
Great, thank you.
Staff have any more comments? Any more comments from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley to close a public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Majmadar to close a public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH 3060ZA, 242, 274, and 284 Brainerd Road, application for zone change from R 44 to MFHD, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC applicant Anthony Triano Jr. and Petronella, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC owners MAP 77, Lot 68, 67, and MAP 62, Lot 319, R 44 Zone with the flow following.
Following.
Following, I'm sorry. Following reasons for approval, effective date. Finding is, in making the decision, the Commission has considered the town's current P O C D and finds that the applicant is consistent with the applicable P O C D policies, goals, and objectives.
Yeah. Excuse me.
I move we waive the reading. I make a motion that we waive the reading.
We can do that, I believe. Yeah. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Majmadar to waive the rest of the reading. There's a lot of reading here, and I know you gentlemen have that. All those in favor waiving the reading, and the rest, signify by saying aye. There's a motion to approve by Temporary Secretary DeGray. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we need to call the roll, please.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Lynda DeGray, four. Virginia Higley, four. Karam Majmadar.
You're doing good. Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
And Nick Lefakis.
Four.
The record indicated it was six Commissioners to approve. We are one short on this particular application. So you do have your zone change, gentlemen? Just give us a second to catch up here a little bit, and we'll move on to the second part.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
The public.
We need to set the effective date for the MAP amendment.
Yep. The effective date is on, the effective 8:30 a.m. on June 1, 2023. Sorry, I had that circled too. I apologize.
Now, understand that you, if you don't feel comfortable with June 1, and you'd like to set it earlier, you can certainly do that by all means. The legal notice will go out, get published probably this weekend, I would think. 15 days is the middle of May. So June 1 is only a couple of weeks beyond the end of the appeal period, basically. So if you're comfortable with that...
I think we're fine. You need the, yeah, the legal notice. Is it in here? Give us a second. We have to find where our secretary keeps the...
Do you need an extension for that?
There it is.
Thank you.
Nope, that's the wrong one. It's the other one. There we go. So it's this one here. Thank you, everybody.
All right. The Enfield Zoning and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 8:20 Enfield Street concerning PH 3061, 42, yeah, 242, 274, and 284 Brainerd Road, application for multifamily housing development, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC, applicant Anthony Triano Jr. and Petronella, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC owners MAP 77, Lot 68, MAP 77, Lot 67, and MAP 62, Lot 319, R 44 Zones.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, back over here. Thank you, Jimmy. The applicant and the representatives here, identify yourselves again for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Attorney Paul Smith, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, representing the applicant, which is Washington Associates of Enfield LLC. With me is, for the record, is Dana Steele of JR Russo and Associates. To my left, the civil engineer, Frank Triano, representing the ownership group, and Dave Ziyaks of FA Hesketh, who performed the traffic study. Again, just very quickly, only for purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about the 20.92 parcel at the corner of Brainerd and George Washington, which was the subject of the, obviously, of the prior zone change. You've approved the zone change to the multifamily district. And now before you, we have our application for a special use permit for 42 units of single-family detached dwellings. And I'm going to turn it over to Dana at this point to sort of walk you through the site in terms of how it's been designed and developed. And we think we've hit most of the high points in your multifamily tax change regulation in terms of these issues, but I, we should walk through it all. There may be some things that we need to work on. It's fine. It's, you know, this is not necessarily something that has to be decided instantaneously. It's what ultimately the Commission becomes comfortable with in terms of a special use permit and the conditions it opposes on the applicant. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Dana just to give you a walkthrough. Okay?
Thank you, Attorney Smith. For the record, again, Dana Steele, I'm a professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates located at 1 Shoham Road in East Windsor. This, this application for a multifamily housing development, single-family detached dwellings is, I'm showing a color rendering of it on the screen, and I'd be happy to go through specific sheets of the, of the plan set, include 20 sheets in detail if you have questions. But I find the color ones a little easier to look at and refer to, especially when you're looking at it from a distance. So I'm just going to refer to that as I, as I walk through this proposal. Properties located on the corner of Brainerd Road, which is to the top of the page, north of the property, and George Washington Road, which is west of the property. It has frontage on the corner, and it's an L-shaped lot that goes to the back on the, on the east side, abutting the Connecticut Water Property to the east. There is a commercial development across the street on George Washington Road. It's a convenience store and restaurant, and there's a church diagonally across First Baptist. And further to the south on George Washington is the rear access to St. Martha's. So rest of the properties abutting across the street are a single-family residential in the R 33 Zone and, and a single-family home abutting immediately to the east on the south side of Brainerd Road in the R 44 Zone. And then the properties to the south are undeveloped land. So there is a power line, utility line that runs along the south side of our boundary, and there's an access road to be able to maintain those power lines so that you can walk it fairly easily. But that is the southern abutter. So there's, they, really, the main residential abutters are the, are the properties immediately adjacent here to the east and across the street. So similar to the last application back in 2005, we wanted to propose a plan that provided some screening and protection. So this didn't look like frontage lots right on Brainerd Road, but had a private roadway about 2,000 feet in length with a short cul-de-sac at the west end and two access points on Brainerd Road. And our, our traffic engineer, FA Hesketh, has looked at the sightline for these driveways, and they provide adequate sightline at both locations. And the, the locations are intended to, are lined up with an existing intersection for Debbie Lane, I believe it is. And so, so they're good in terms of planning to line up with other intersections and create a intersection. So you don't have turning movements there that are competing with one another, but they're crossing without crossing each other's path when you have two left-hand turns, for example, happening at the same time from both driveways. So you can see there's a substantial buffer. This is an aerial photo of the, of their area, very wooded area around of the property, and some existing vegetation along Brainerd Road. You can see a lot of it is being maintained. There's some areas that was, there was a single-family home in the middle here that's since been removed, but the area is still wide open there. So we're proposing the required buffer plantings in order to bring that up to the standards of your regulations. So some, some of the buffer plantings are met by maintaining existing mature vegetation and some by supplementing with, with new vegetation. But it's the intent to fully comply with all of your buffer requirements. So the areas with the colored dots you see around, along the corner of the intersection where it's pretty wide open, and then along the southern boundary here on the, on the western side is where we're providing some of those enhancements, as well as at the single-family home to the east, up close to the north, the northeast corner of the property. There's a gap there. So there's a couple of gaps that we're filling in, and certainly, it's our intent to provide a fully compliant buffer. So if there is additional plantings that are needed within the existing vegetation, we're happy to work with staff on, before we, you know, complete the, like the COs on these units to make sure that, that we're providing what, what is our intention is to a fully compliant buffer. Certainly, we don't, we don't want to cut down trees to plant new ones, but where some additional evergreens are needed to fill in, so forth, we can, we can certainly do that. So the project, I think, as I mentioned during the previous application, is also located within an OCFRA protection area. This used single-family resident, residential does not fall under one of the uses that require regulating for, in the OCFRA protection zone. That's why we haven't submitted an application to the OCFRA Protection Agency for a permit. However, we did notify Connecticut Water Company, who's the water company jurisdiction over this, this OCFRA protection area. And back in 2005, they commented on, on the application, and we addressed their comments. But when we submitted our comments this time, they brought, they came with new comments, additional comments. So, so we were obliged to respond to those as well. So before we submitted our application to you, we already had those comments, and, and we have addressed them in the plan. And in my letter that Attorney Smith mentioned previously earlier in the night, my cover letter to this application of the project narrative, I went through in detail talking about how we responded to each of those. And I don't know if you want me to go into detail about that, but it's, it's there documented stating for the record, I believe we've addressed all of their concerns, and, and we have submitted the, these revised plans with those comments addressed to the, to the water company. So I believe we're, we're in full compliance with their recommendations. The one area I will, I will note, they, they had asked for in their comments for us to install a stormwater basin right at the corner of George Washington and Brainerd Road. Reason for that is, in the previous application, we had a water quality treatment unit, a structural unit installed to clean the water, treat it before it went into the detention system and then downstream. So we're cleaning the water before it leaves the site. However, the water company said, that's good, but we would prefer to see some vegetative types of filtering, not just the structural mechanical. So, so they use the term non-structural treatment. And so I mentioned this in the letter. Our objection to a basin right at the corner of George Washington here is that, when you look at the, the plans, you see that our drainage to get all the way from the east side of the site over to the west side of the site, the pipes that are in, that have to get there keep dropping deeper and deeper and deeper as you get. So by the time you get to the west side, the, the pipe's about six feet, seven feet in, in the ground below the grade. So any basin that we would construct there, we'd have to go down six or seven feet really before we even start with the storage that we need. So if you can kind of visualize that, then we would need to have like a 12-foot deep basin in order to, to have that kind of capacity that we need. And putting a basin of that depth so close to the, to the road seemed like a bad planning idea. We recognize the concern, and so we made modifications to our plans to incorporate some of the, what they call low-impact development, green, vegetative filtering by eliminating curbing, putting in a depression area in the center of the cul-de-sac here so that, so... here so that, so that the, the runoff is, is getting into an area where there's some filtering and treatment. So we believe that meets the spirit of what they're asking for and, and these were just recommendations that they, that they were making. We feel that, that we have accomplished that with, with a, a plan that provides some, some of what they're looking for without creating what I think would be a nuisance right at the corner of the, of the, of the site. We'd probably have to put a fence around it and, and it's just, would be, I think, less attractive for, for the development. I think this is a, a better solution and is consistent with what, what we proposed back in 2005. So as I said, they didn't comment on that back in 2005. They did this time. So we've made an effort to, to improve, make the project even better. And I think that we've accomplished that and what we've done is, 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 is good. So that's all I'll say about the, the Aquifer comments unless you have specific questions. Be happy to go into further detail about it. Our stormwater for the site is divided into two watersheds. You see that the site's an L shape. So the rect, if you picture the rectangle that has frontage along Brainerd Road, along the entire frontage of Brainerd Road, that's one watershed. It's, it kind of works out nicely that way. There's a, there's a divide right, right along the middle of the, of the site. Everything north of there drains out to Brainerd Road and George Washington Road. That's, that's where it's going now and that's where it's going to continue to go. Everything to the south beyond that ridge is, drains to the south and there are some wet, some wetlands that, on the property. We received the wetland approval for those activities and, and so, so that water flows through there. Ultimately all heads towards St. Martha's Pond. That's, that's where all of this is headed. And that's where the drainage in George Washington Road goes. So the town has drainage that goes there. That's where our, our drainage is going now. That's where it will continue to go. And so we're providing treatment for that water. We're providing storm peak attenuation, reduction of volumes. Because whenever you add impervious areas to a site, it, it increases the amount of runoff from the site. We can increase runoff from the site. So you have to capture it, detain it, or infiltrate it. In this case, the water company said, we don't want it, want you to infiltrate it. So they, they, so we, we, we put a liner in the system so that it's, it's not going to infiltrate. So there's a subsurface system in this lawn area, which allows us to have something that's deep, but not have it look like a giant hole in the ground. And so you have the ability to landscape it. We have a, we're proposing a berm along George Washington. So, so not only is it landscaped, but there's going to be a slight, slight increase in, in elevation to, to provide additional screening there. Probably more so screening the residents of this development from what's across the street than vice versa, but nonetheless, a, a part, part of our proposal, same as our, as our previous 2005 application. Just mention briefly, the, this, this site is located within areas designated on DEP mapping referred to as the Natural Diversity Database. Natural Diversity Database is a, is a database identifying species of concern, whether it's plants or animals, that might live in the area. And, and so the, the map indicates there could be some of those on, on the site. So we, we have hired botanists and entomologists and, and, and experts in, in the fields based on, so what we did is we contacted DEP, said, we, we want to know what you think could be on the site. They sent us a list of what could be on the site and now reports are being, being generated. And those reports are, are, are still in the works of being finalized, but that, that process of dealing with endangered species is something that is regulated by DEP through a process called the General Permit for Stormwater Discharge from Construction Activities. What that means is when a project is approved and it's approved for construction, before you can begin construction, we need to obtain a permit from the state for stormwa, our stormwater discharge during construction. And, and part of that stormwater permitting requires us to, to verify that we're not going to adversely impact any habitat for endangered species. So if there's endangered species, we have to protect them. In, in our case, it's mostly plants that are, that we're dealing with, the rare, rare plants. And so our biologists have been out there to identify them and that, and the area that is where these plants tend to be found is in the sand dune areas. So this site was formerly a gravel pit. Years ago, sand was mined from, from the site, which is why, you know, there used to be a ridgeline along this southern property that continued all the way across to where the Connecticut Water Tower is. And that was all dug out. So, so now it's, there's like a depression in between. And so what we're left with is a, is a steep bank on both the east and the wet, and the west side. And so the sort of a, a low, a low spot now, now in between. And they, they left it that way. They left it just as exposed sand. So there's kind of a beachy-looking environment in the, in the middle of the site. You wouldn't think so from looking on the outside. It's all heavily vegetated and you don't really, really know, know that. But when you get in there, you'll see, you would see that there is these sand dune areas. And that's where some of these rare plants and species like to live. And so part of our, our application and working with our experts is to provide some preservation of those areas. And you see that there's some, some areas designated here on this color plan, between these two units, there's this, there's this rectangular area with a little curve on the, on the, on the east end. So we created a, a gap between units where, where there was a concentration of these plants of, of interest. And so if we're going to preserve those areas, leave them as sand. So there's going to be this, 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 this sand, sand area. However, you know, it might seem like, well, that's a good place for, for maybe kids with their tonka trucks to go playing in them. I, I don't know whether that would be a problem or not if they, if they did, but we're putting a split rail fence around it to contain it. And
But what happens if, if I, if I can interrupt, I hate to do that, but what happens if you find some of these plants over on the west side where you plan on building one of the homes?
Right.
What, what happens? Are you going to transplant them?
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we, there, there are some. What we've done is we've identified where they're most concentrated and saved those areas. And then where, there is some that we're going to have to transplant.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, that's all part of the intention and plan. So this, this, this issue is really addressed at the state level and they will not address this fully until we have our local approval. So, so until you approve it, we can't take it to them. Now, that, that raises the question, what happens if you approve it and then we take it to them and they say, oh, you got to change something. You got to move something around. We, we realize that could happen and, and if that does happen, we'll go back to your staff and say, we've had to make these changes. What, what do we do? Staff may say, you got to go back to the commission for a modification or this is such a minor change that, that, that it doesn't, doesn't require that. That'll be a determination made at that time. So what I can tell you is that we have consulted with our experts to ask us, do, do we feel confident that that's not going to happen? And, and, and they feel good about, about what we're proposing, that it's going to be acceptable to, to DEP. So we wouldn't want to come in with something that we have no idea whether it's going to be, you know, even close to what they want. We feel we do have, we've done our due diligence to know that, that this is, because we don't want to waste our time or, or your time if that, if that were the case. So I think we're, we're staff's time.
Staff's time.
Thank you. So, so we are sensitive to that, but that's, the reality of these types of projects, it's, it's complicated because of that. So there's a sequence of events that has to happen and this is the order that, according to the state regulations, it needs to happen in.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
Okay. So one of the other things that, the change to the MFHD zone does, that's a little different than the SRD zone that this was previously proved in, is the MFHD requires certain amenities, which wasn't specifically required in the, in the SRD. So we didn't have specific amenities and your regulations talk about various amenities and one of them is walking trails. And one of the things we discovered in, in exploring the site is there is an existing walking trail right along the ridge of, of the, of the property, along the southern boundary, the, on the western end here. It's, butts the Crisitelli property here to the south. It's, it's a nice wide canopy-covered walking trail. It's, it's, it's about 12 feet wide. You could drive a car down it, frankly. It's, it's that, wide enough for, for that. And we are proposing to maintain that and use that for a, a walking trail. Now, that's a fairly short distance, but what we want to do is connect that existing walking trail, which is really nice, and connect it to our existing sidewalk system. So we're proposing a stone dust trail to come down along the conservation area here and then with a mid-block pedestrian crosswalk at this, at this location and to the other conservation area here. And what we're proposing at this conservation area is a second amenity, which is a seating area. And our thought is, you know, these, we've got endangered plant species and that's our sort of unique and educational opportunities. So, so we want to have an educational plaque set up with, with some benches for where residents can, can rest and, and gather, converse, and they want to educate themselves about these endangered species. It also have the, the advantage of helping them to understand this is an area to be respected and not to be trampled on, so.
Now, we noticed those are not on this plan. Are those on, on the more detailed plans that walk in?
Yes. Yeah. And I can turn to those specific pages if you'd like.
I think, I think, since, I think you probably should, we can wait if you want to get there, but I think you should show us that detail, yes.
Sure. Sure. Okay. So we have the, the, the amenity. So the regulations require two amenities. So we're providing a walking trail that connects to this seating area at a, at an area of educational interest. So, and in addition to that, I don't know if you can, this is an amenity so much, but we are installing sidewalks along the entire street frontage. So all along Brainerd Road and George Washington Road, there will be sidewalks and the walking trail will be connected to that. So what that does is it creates a nice walking loop where the residents can walk along Brainerd Road and George Washington Road, then back into the development along the sidewalk, which is on the, the west side of the, the eastern driveway, comes along the inside of the, of the radius here, up to the, the seating area and then continues around and back out to, to Brainerd Road. So you actually have a couple of loops. You could take the smaller loop or the larger loop, depending on whether you want to go cross-terrain through this, this canopy-covered natural walking area. So, so those are the, the amenities that are, are being proposed as, as a part of this application in compliance with your regulations. Before I go to the specific sheets that, that talk about that and show that, and I show you a little more detail, just wanted to talk briefly about the, the zoning requirements for, for this MFHD zone. Minimum lot acre, 20 acres. We're at 20, almost 21 acres. Includes three parcels that'll be combined into that, into that single parcel. The, the maximum density is two units per developable acre. And for the developable acre, we have to subtract out 25% of slopes in excess of 15% and 50% of, of wetlands. And so we do have some of each, which we subtract from the total area of the site and then determine the maximum density, which is 42. The maximum lot coverage, that is the maximum size of buildings that could be on, on the lot, is 30%. We're showing currently with this plan 24%. My experience with these developments that it's somewhat market-driven, that someone might come in and want a smaller house and it ends up being a little smaller, or a little bit bigger house and it ends up being a little bit bigger. And so that may fluctuate between the, each individual unit as it's sold and, and, and built. But there is a, a hard cutoff. It can't be more than 30%. So they can only get so much bigger. We're already at 24 with, with this proposal. And I think this is, this is pretty generous. We have three, three different styles shown here, but really two. It's really like two different styles. You've got these, these larger rectangles, which are two-story units with a, with a two-car garage and, and dwelling above. It's narrower, but deeper. And then we have these, these more ranch-style units, which are longer, but, but not, but not as deep, also with a, with a two-car, so.
Do you have some pictorial to those individual units?
They were submitted with the application. I didn't, I don't think they have them on the, in the PowerPoint here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I did see them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and those are, those are the
I'm hoping so we can show them to the public, but that's okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's my, my fault.
That's all right.
So the, those, those units are exactly the same as what was submitted with the previous application. So there's been no rethought or redesign of those. We felt, we did, we talked about it. We talked, says, do we want to, do we want to do something different? Do we want to? And, and the feeling was that, that, that this would be, be a, a good starting point. So the, the intent really is, is to provide an explanation of the style and the type of units that are going to be built and that they're inevitably going to vary somewhat between, between that and what's, what's actually built. And, and so, and I realize that creates sort of a challenge for staff at times to say, so how much different can it be? And that's a good discussion that, that you want to have. And, but I, I think the, the intent is, is to have something that is typical to what you would see in a residential subdivision these days. The types of, of developments with, with creative roof lines and, and interesting features and not just a, a plain box with vinyl siding. These are higher-end style units that, that are, are intended. And, and so that's, it provided is illustrative, not necessarily definitive on, on what, what will be, happen. So welcome for your feedback on that if, if, if that's a concern for you. But since it was what we submitted last time, we felt that would be an appropriate place to start and we're willing to listen to any of your feedback regarding that. So these units are, I think primarily two-bedroom, though some of them have a, have a, like a bonus room kind of option, maybe a, could, could be a third bedroom. But two and three bedrooms is, is, is what the, we would, I don't think there's any one-bedroom options that were, that they're considering. So, so it's two-bedroom, maybe a bonus room, office, could be a third bedroom, that kind of a configuration. The impervious coverage requirements is also 30%. So, so, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke before. The lot, the lot coverage is 30%. That's the, the building size. We're only at 12% with this one. So technically it could get a lot bigger. It could get more than twice as big. However, the, the other coverage requirement is the impervious coverage, which is the total roof area plus any impervious concrete patios, plus the driveway, plus the road, plus the sidewalks, every, everything that's impervious on, on the site. So this plan, as it's presented to you, is at 24%. So I misspoke before when I said that was the lot coverage. That's the impervious coverage currently proposed. But it could, it can exceed 30%. So it's, it's not likely to change very much because we're limited on setbacks and you still have to meet all, all the setback requirements. So the setback from the perimeter of the site, minimum 50 feet. So we have, we have 50-foot buffers along all the perimeter roads, 35 feet from the side, from, from, from the side property. So everything's got to be at least 35 feet away from a side property and 50 feet away from, from the rear property line, which is, in this case, is the, is the power, is the power lines in the back. So it's, we're not even close to that. And allowed height, two stories would be the maximum. And I mentioned your, your regulations to require a type A buffer, 25 feet wide. And so we're, we're showing those in, in the areas where there's gaps, where they're, they're lacking, where we don't have enough existing vegetation.
So that is, that is the extra buffer, if you don't mind, because I'm looking at the map and I don't want to lose the thought, between, at the top, northeast with the single-family home there. Between, at the top northeast with the single-family home there, that's the extra buffer you're adding there with the non-color dots.
Yep, that there, and also along the southern boundary here, although there's no residents there, but there as well.
Right, okay, thank you.
And the units are supposed to have a separation distance between them of at least 20 feet and 25 feet from the road, which provides room for a car to park in the driveway. So, these all have two-car garages, so there's really two spaces right there, plus a two-car garage is really four spaces per unit. So, I know, you know, sometimes a concern is about, what about visitor parking? We don't have any, like, parking lot, or, but, but these are Cape Cod-style curbing, so they're a low-profile curbing, which means that cars can pull up on them fairly easy. So, if someone were to have a party, and more than two cars show up to park in the driveway, they could park along the side and pull off into the grass shoulder to stay, to stay out to provide more room. But this is really being designed similar, as you would a town road, for a subdivision. So, we think that this is reasonable, and granted, it's a higher density than you would have in a conventional subdivision, but since we're providing two-car garages and two cars in the driveway, we think we have ample parking for the site. Of course, there's going to be those occasions where there's an excess, but that's true really in any neighborhood. Anywhere you go, occasionally, there's those larger amount of cars, and you can't really design for the extreme circumstances of, that could happen from time to time. The other good thing about this type of development, as opposed to a regular subdivision, is that there's a homeowners' association that regulates and controls these things. So, if they don't want to have parties, they can prohibit it. They can restrict, they can put restrictions and control what happens in their community in that way. So, there's really some additional safeguards and protections from those things in this type of application. The regulations also require some area of open space preservation of land, and we are preserving a wooded area to the, around the perimeter, but the majority in this area around our stormwater basin, so as I mentioned, the two watersheds, we have one outlet going to a subsurface system that ties into George Washington Road, the other one to a stormwater basin that's a wet pond with a micro pool and a forbay. So, the water flows through this first blue rectangle, then overflows into this larger oval, and there's a smaller permanent pool in, right near the outlet before it goes out, and that provides the treatment for the water prior to leaving, as well as detention, so that we don't increase runoff leaving our site. So, this whole area to the south is going to be preserved in a conservation easement. Easement allows for the ongoing maintenance of the basin, but other than that, no further development there, no cutting down of more trees, so there's going to be a lot of preservation in there. And so, we're providing almost three and a half acres of open space conservation, which well exceeds your requirement of your regulation. And since there's no town properties abutting this, actually deeding land to the town seems like it wouldn't be really of value or use, so the easement seems like a better way to go. It preserves, protects the land, but doesn't encumber the town with another property to maintain, and where there's, the access is limited. But certainly, the residents of the development will have use of this area for passive recreation. So, I think that's, those are the, some of the, all the details I want. I realize it's, of course, maybe a lot, but--
Could you bring us to those?
I will.
Yeah, thank you.
So, this is our plan set. Let's see if I can skip down here. Is it going to let me go down? Yeah, it will. So, we have, oh, it's not letting me zoom here. We have along the southern property here, that existing walking trail, and-- If I can, maybe, oh, can't zoom in that way, let's see. No, it's a search. I guess it's this one here.
There you go.
Okay. So, you can see there's an existing trail here. See that dash, that dash line here runs through the existing wooded area, and there's an area where it bumps out into the area that we're clearing, and so, I'm relocating it right along the property line in that area. So, that's the existing walking trail. Then, we have the new relocated walking trail. You can see the walking trail here without the trees turned on, and so, it'll be a little clearer to see that, how that meanders here, and we'll tie into the existing sidewalks, which is the gray shaded line here. We'll tie into that sidewalks, and then, as it comes down here, we're eliminating this last part of it here, and veering off with a walking trail four feet wide here, just to respect the privacy of these residents, not to get, you know, something too wide, or, intent is not to have vehicles driving through these things, it's just for walking. There's the crosswalk that I mentioned, mid-block crosswalk, to the sidewalk that's on the other side of the road, and the other conservation area here, there's again, a stone dust walk off of there, and a circular area with four benches, and so, there'll be a seating area there. So, walking trail and the seating area is depicted on--
And on the other side, to be able to connect to the sidewalk, if you keep going to the east?
So, it, yeah, the sidewalk keeps going up to here and loops in with this sidewalk, and then, so the next sheet, well, this is the sheet below, so it keeps going down around the inside of the radius and up the west side of that driveway, and to the last sheet here shows, shows it coming back up again and tying back into the sidewalk system. It's a new sidewalk system on--
You're not going to go back through the other backyards there? You're going to make them walk?
No, yeah, yeah. It's just a little diversion to step off of the main walking trail, to have a rest, and to--
Continue on.
Then continue on.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for showing us that.
Sure.
Are you guys all set for now? Take a breather?
Yeah, I think we're good. Anything else?
I'm going to leave this one up.
Sure. You guys, before I open the public, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lefakis?
Yes. Could you talk a little bit about the bright red area that's on the--
Sure. Yeah, that's the, that's a wetland area, an isolated wetland, that was not identified on the previous application back in '05, when we went out and re-flagged them. We discovered that there was another isolated wetland here. So, the red area showing is a portion of that that's being disturbed. You can see the tree line is kind of cutting right through the middle of it. So, the part that's being preserved is this, what's to the east, and to the west, that's going to become a lawn, a lawn area. So, that was part of our wetland application that we received approval from, and what we were doing is we are mitigating that impact by providing an additional wetland here. See this green triangle, darker green triangle? That's going to be a new depressed area that the water will flow through and provide additional, whatever types of benefits this wetland was providing here will be provided times two in this, in this area here. It's a double the area that is disturbed. So, that's what the red is. It's really not applicable to the zoning application, but I didn't remove it from the plan. But, it's a good question.
What's that? Do you want to ask questions now, or do you want to hear from the public first and ask questions later? You seem to have a lot, so go ahead. Maybe you'll knock off some of my questions.
I've got quite a few. So, on page five of your plan.
Page five.
Yeah, okay. Units number 22 and 20, and 14 and 18 are very close to those sensitive areas that we're not supposed to disturb, and you're planning on putting, "Do not disturb, don't go in these areas." I'm living there, and that looks messy to me.
Two and 20, so these two right here?
Yeah, you see how it cuts right through their backyard and close to their houses? What's going to prevent people from going in there and cutting down what they think is messy? That's one question. What are you going to do when people on the sides, the, because actually, the back of the houses on the Washington Road and the Brainerd Road will actually be facing those roads? People put playscapes. We're going to have multiple playscapes out there, because these are family houses. It can be two, three bedrooms. If you have two or three bedrooms, you're going to have a couple of kids in there. Then, there's also accessory buildings. What's going to prevent people from putting sheds back there? And then, you also have patios and enclosed porches. What's going to prevent those homeowners from going? You're going to have an association. Yeah, that's great, but, you know, association people change as homeowners change. To prevent people from adding more patio areas, stone patios in the back of their apartment, their houses, because the thing is, it's the back of my house, I'm paying for this, and I want to have a stone patio because I want to have a fire pit. And then, the other thing is, I don't see anything, any place for the snow piles on any of these. Where are they going to be? That's, those are my questions for right now.
Okay. Do you want to respond to any of those, or you want to batch them up and wait?
With regard to the first one, obviously, the plan calls for each home to have a 2,000-square-foot area, that, that's sort of their exclusive use area, right?
Right, but if you look at that, that sensitive area is part, you see the dash line, is part of their backyard.
But--
It's beyond the exclusive--
Yes, it's not. It's beyond their exclusive use area. Functionally, what happens generally is those areas are mapped out on the documents, on the homeowner's documents. People usually don't exceed that stuff.
Oh, yeah, they do.
I mean, they might within there put a, you know, if you want to put a playscape, I guess, within your, within your area, you can, but those are common areas that are maintained by the association. They're mowed, they're maintained regularly, so I, you know--
I understand.
A lot of PUDs, I never, and, you know, there are some issues with this stuff, but it never is overwhelming. It's never like somebody's going, you know, 200, 100 feet, or 50 feet, or 30 feet into sort of the open space.
I know a farm in Summers that's currently having an issue with an association, where they're clear-cutting a buffer that's supposed to be maintained, because the people there want more.
And the only other solution I could think of is some sort of fencing, right? I mean, that might demarcate it.
Well, I think we've addressed this through the landscaping plan, so if you look at the, I've got the landscaping plan pulled up here, so those two units you were talking about, 20 and 22. So, what I try to do with the landscaping is to use landscaping as a natural delineation of the use area, so that someone can know, "My exclusive use area is up to that pine tree." So, these evergreens that are proposed along the perimeter provide a barrier, so you're going to put a shed behind those? You know, it would be, it create a natural barrier. So, this is part of the approval, so they can't cut it down without violating the approval. That would become an enforcement issue. And as we said, the association has control over those things as well.
Yep.
So, does that, does that make you feel any better, that there's some plantings?
Yeah, and in a perfect world, the association does control this, but in the real world, they don't.
Yeah.
Because people go out there with their chainsaws and whatever, and seeing that you're maintaining the land, I don't understand why they would need any kind of accessory buildings on the property at all, because there's no reason for it.
Right, they don't need a lawnmower.
They don't need the lawnmower. And then--
But if someone wanted a fire pit, they could put in a fire pit if it's within their exclusive use area.
Right, but again, you know, why would you need a, you've got a garage, you've got a basement. Why would you need an accessory building?
Yeah, I agree.
And where are you going to put the snow?
Okay, so, so the, I don't know if I should go to a different--
Maybe the green one?
Yeah, probably, that'd be easier. So, so there's, you know, just like in any subdivision, you know, you plow the road, it pushes the snow off into the, what's the snow shelf, which is the area between the sidewalk and the, and the curb. Of course, we all know, owning properties, that the snow goes onto the sidewalk, and then you have to shovel it and blow it, but you don't blow it back into the road. I think most people understand that, blow it into their yards. So, all of the areas in front of the units are fair game for snow stockpile. And that is noted on the plan. That was something that was brought up from the Wetlands Commission as well, and so, we did add that as a note to the plan, that all of the areas in front of the units will, are fair game for snow stockpile.
Are you all set for now? Okay. Can we hear from the public first? So, if you guys take a break for a second, you might not have to get up, who knows? So, hold on, is there anyone to speak for or against this application? Identify yourself for the record, please.
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. Déjà vu. Now, there's only three of you who absolutely know why I'm sitting here. Commissioner Lefakis, Commissioner Higley, and Lori Whitten, our executive, whatever your title is. Back in the day, 35 years ago, a planned residential development got built, and I am the lucky winner to be the neighbor. And it is now spring, and we're 35 years later, and every spring, the zoning enforcement officer gets a phone call. Let's talk about planned residential developments. Commissioner Gray, you hit it out of the park. The builder is the builder, and the owner is the owner. And the association changes, and the owners change, and everybody comes in with great expectations, and I will tell you right now that playscapes, fences, sheds, three-season rooms will become seasoned rooms or fold rooms, and then they're going to add patios, then they're going to put on decks, then they're going to add an extra shed, then they're going to put in a fence, and you know what they all have in common? An exclusive use area that they're not supposed to be in. They're not supposed to be in it. So, limitations and safeguards? Builders can't stop once they leave. Here's the declaration for this development behind my house. Very long, has a lot of stuff in it. Tells them what they can and cannot do, but every year, they're cutting down the buffer. Every year, they're taking out, adding more things to it, and putting in new sheds and stuff like that. One of the other things, white pines. Do not put in white pines. But if you ask them to put in a condition, please do not put in scrawny-ass white pines, excuse me, white pines. They grow very tall, they break all over the place, and they do not do the buffering you think they'll do. Okay? So, please don't do that. Set the conditions and set them strong, because the builder will do exactly what you ask them to do, but you will not have conditions that you can give to the association to make them do what they're supposed to do, which they're going to end up being, in a nice way, bad neighbors. Some of the things that I have to put up with is the constant, we had a 50-foot buffer, and some of you, actually only one of you, sat on this board and cut my 50-foot buffer to 25 feet, because the people who live in-- Because the people who live in this development, their feelings were that they needed more exclusive use space. And it wasn't right that I had a 50-foot buffer and they couldn't use it. So now, if you, and if you really want to understand this with all your heart, come to my house, I'll show it to you. I have what I think I have six neighbors to my 90-foot backyard. Some of the things that actually are some of the other parts I want to talk to you about. We worked really hard to get rid of planned residential developments, and really that "we" was me. Because we couldn't control what happens after the fact. When they came in to build it, the only difference, and I will give this builder kudos, is the fact that they are going to make sure that they have a landscape declaration and that they cannot mow, plow, shovel, snow blow their property. That way, they don't need plows, shovels, sheds, gas tanks, or anything else. Because what's happened to me is each person is in charge of their own property. You are now going to make sure that the whole property is handled. I actually found it kind of interesting about the amenities of the walking trail. I want to be here when the neighbors show up and tell you they want that walking trail to be closed off because they don't like people walking behind their house. Because if any of you remember, they built a walking trail, or supposedly, over at the presidential area. This shows you how long I've been sitting here listening to planning and zoning. They put in a walking trail in the presidential area when they were building over there. And you know what happened after they built the development? The neighbor showed up and the planning and zoning commissioner took out the walking trail because they didn't like people walking behind their house. Because you know what kind of people can walk behind that house because it's a walking trail? Me. Me. I could drive over to Brainerd Park, Brainerd Road, and I could get out of my car and I could walk back there. Unless they've got a sign that says, keep out you Turner people. The roads are not to spec. Now, I don't know this for a fact, but keep that in mind, that the planned residential development that I know only has a 20-foot road. The town's road requirement is 24 feet, from what I understand. Now, I'm going to give the builder a gift. Back in 2000, Mr. Chairman, we don't usually have a time recommend, the timeline here. And I said for two hours.
I've got five minutes, 17, so keep going.
So, the Enfield Town Council back in 2000, October 16th to be specific, actually gave planned residential condos and, I don't know the exact words here, I'll look for it. They pick up their trash and they pick up their recycles. That's part of the town ordinance. So you know what? They shouldn't have to have, they should take advantage of that benefit. And I will be more than happy to give a copy of this to the, to the builder because they go right through it. The only thing they cannot take that the town, that I did fight against, and this document has none of the comments I had in there of why we shouldn't have been picking up their trash, because they're a planned residential development and a condo, is they don't pick up landscape. Please keep that in mind if you change your mind, decide that you're going to let them take advantage of the town's garbage pickup and the town's recycling pickup. Because for some strange reason, back in October 16th to 2000, we all felt it was nice to be fair. I just want to give you the kind of thing that I have. This little booklet here, which I will share with my Z E O tomorrow, has, goes back to 1993 to 2004. This is how long I have been, and that's just one document. My documents are like this high of all the legal stuff that I've gone through because I have a planned residential development behind me. They don't have a place to put their stuff, they're going to come in and look for a place to put their stuff. What is the buffer on the east side? I saw some of it over there. Let me tell you what happens with the buffer. Unless you plant, take out all the natural vegetation, which they did not do in mine, it grows into knotweed and all kinds of crazy stuff that the poison ivy, think of anything like that. That's what's back there. That's what's back there. But we asked, back in 1993, to have it all removed. But the builder got the town to agree to natural buffer. Natural is God's way of saying, I can put anything I want back there. It also means that people like me make them not cut it. Thing is, be careful what you agree to. Okay? If there's unnatural materials back there, I strongly advise you to have them removed and have that stuff planted with real shrubbery or something. I enjoy the part about putting up a split rail fence because you're going to have this little area that you're going to keep up. I'm telling you right now, I have a fire road that's 30 years old that has not been maintained since the day it was put in. Okay? This is run by an association. They should know what they're supposed to do. I'm letting you know, association people try to do the best they can. But people who own these buildings, they see them as their home. They see them as their yard. They see it as a place to put their dogs, their children, their grandchildren. They will put up fences or they'll try. They will try to put in the extra sheds. I'm telling you, it's going to happen. And someday, not all of you are going to be sitting here when the neighbor shows up or no one's paying attention to what they're doing in there because nobody's watching them like I have to do. You're not going to know. And all those sensitive areas and all those plants that they're trying to protect, it's not that the builder's not going to do what they said they're going to do. You are not going to be able to control the people who live there. And Commissioner Gray has absolutely hit it. Because I know from a fact, as soon as you're gone, they're going to do what they want because it's their home. And then they're going to come in front of the council and they're going to tell the council why they're feeling abused. Because they pay taxes too. And I could guarantee you that the homes that they're building are not going to be $100,000 homes. They're going to be worth something, especially three-bedroom ones. And those folks are going to pay real high taxes. And they're not going to like being controlled on what they can and cannot do. So what I'm asking you to think about, make sure your conditions are carried forward to the, the declaration that this homeowner's group has to put in there. That they see them when they sign and buy their buildings. Because what happens one after another, as soon as you, I buy it the first time, but I sell it to this person the next time, and then that person sells it to this time, by the time it gets to this person buying it, their lawyer doesn't do their job. And they don't read it.
That's it.
I'll come back. I can tell you about your two.
Ten times.
I can. That's okay.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Please come up.
Hi there, Dr. Stacy Olivera, 286 Brainerd Road. I would like to thank Mrs. Turner because obviously she's kind of been in my shoes. I would like clarification on what's being placed to border my property from the backyard of those like top two properties. Right now, there's a ton of wood and trees and natural foliage, and I mean, that is what I would prefer, but from that diagram, it looks like it's an empty scape and...
Is that the northeast corner?
I apologize.
The house?
Oh, sorry, I'm not tech savvy. Correct, yes.
Okay, we'll ask again.
Yep, because right now, this is 274. So that is that abandoned cottage, which I'm sad to see that it's not going to be repurposed to a beautiful cottage, but that's okay. Here, that is currently wood, woods and trees. So I'm just not sure why it looks like this because I know this is empty with no coverage whatsoever.
We don't do this, so the applicant will come up and...
Oh, okay, afterwards, got it. Okay. The preservation of the walking trail, I think that's great. That is such a beautiful area, and to see it get taken away would be a disappointment to this part of the neighborhood. I do want to know, this area, I know they mentioned that the community here would have access for recreational purposes, but would there be access for the other members of Sherwood Manor? And then, because I'm not expecting an answer right now.
What's Sherwood Manor?
Are we not in Sherwood Manor? Brainerd, I apologize, Brainerd Gardens. So I just want to make sure that other neighbors of this community will also have access to it.
Usually I don't do this, I just want to make sure we get your question. Other people that might be living in this, in front of you, or other people in the surrounding area?
The surrounding area.
An HOA, so they probably wouldn't have.
Would not. Okay, thank you for clarifying. But just to confirm, this walking trail, others would have access to that?
We have that question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? You have a third time for three minutes only, Mary Ann. Three, because I already gave her three extra minutes, I lumped her first and second time together.
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. Commissioner Fiori.
We're not going to do this, so if you have something else to add to us?
You don't need to speak to me.
You don't need to speak to me?
I'm not speaking to you. I'm speaking at you.
There we go.
The builder is coming in with a very good project. The question and the reason I am sitting in front of you is do not walk down the same road you did in 1993. The neighbors will be harmed. The people who live there will be harmed. They don't know it yet, but they will be. And this commission needs to have a brighter scope and understand what some of the things I'm bringing in front of you. And really and truly, it's been a long time since I've been in front of planning and zoning, and I used to come every month for years. I don't know if I have that much time on my hands anymore. The last thing that I want to make sure that we have on the record is that if you need any attorney's instructions, and I have had to have plenty of them with this previous PRD, make sure you take the time to get them. If you don't understand something, make sure you ask the question. Do not assume that just because it's written in the minutes, because I learned this lesson, minutes are not subject to enforcement. The only way to enforce is if you put them in a condition. And we remember that. So I'm asking you to think a little bit broadly, and I will leave the seat.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to submit to us, Mary Ann, before you go?
I'm going to make copies for the applicant. They don't need to go to you.
Okay.
You can put that in the office.
Anybody else in the public that sees for or against this application? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. The applicants can come back up. I'm sure there's some questions from the commissioners.
Well, they have to...
Yeah.
Is that yours?
So is there anything you'd like to answer to that came from the public, or you'd like us to start with our questions? It's up to you.
Yeah, just a couple little comments. I mean, generally, this, like any other planned unit development, has a homeowners association that governs things much broader than you normally see with private-owned land. There's a common roadway, has to be plowed and maintained. There are limited areas that each unit will have under the regulation that's within, exclusively within the control of that unit. But it's not unusual, and these things work generally very, very well. There are many, you know, planned unit developments at Enfield of various types. Most of them have, not like this, but most of them have multiple units per building. And I just, I mean, you shouldn't start off, I don't think it's reasonable to start off that people are going to do some bad acts, whatever that is, whether it's one owner of a property or a homeowners association, that they're going to, you know, sort of cut down the trees in the, the open space. You know, that's just a presumption of bad acts. Obviously, the homeowners association documents, the conditions that are put on and the plans that are approved by this commission set certain things. So if there's violations, there are remedies to that. And I can't address what this commission, or neither can you, what this commission may do three or four years from now, in terms of accommodating a homeowners association or what the town council may do. But these things generally have worked really successfully, and they provide housing for people that may not be able to afford, or, or want to afford, or want to maintain a house that has a full, you know, three quarters of an acre yard or a half acre yard. So these things work generally really, really well. And, I mean, this type of project, I think at the end you'll see will work extremely well. So I don't, you know, some of the comments seem a bit off to me. We do want to sort of address the, the plantings that are going in on the, Dana, on that area to the, to the upper...
Yeah, and that upper corner here, yeah, we're showing, based on our evaluation, it needed additional plantings. If it doesn't, then they won't need to be planted. So we're not, and not our intention to cut anything down in that area. So I can, I can take another look at it and, and see. I understand the comment up here, they feel that the buffer there is already established, mature, and doesn't, doesn't need the plantings. And if that's the case, then we won't plant them. But based on our evaluation, it looked like it was, it was in need of some supplementing.
Yeah, I mean, generally, what we do are two things. One is try to preserve trees and so forth that are worth preserving. If there are some that are, that for, you know, because they're decayed or diseased, you know, you don't preserve them because they're going to come out anyway, and try to replant with something more, more hardy or, and native.
Not to interrupt, just so we don't lose this thought. If they decided, went out there and they decided now that they might not need as many plantings based on what we heard from one of the homeowners, does that still satisfy our buffer requirement there?
Yeah.
Would that still satisfy our buffer requirement there in that corner if they didn't have as many plantings as they're proposing?
What the applicant is asking for is to use the natural buffer, and Dana did say that they would supplement after the trees have been cut, after the clearing, that they would supplement any empty holes.
Yeah, yeah, that's how I took it, too. But if they don't do that, does it still satisfy our buffer requirement with, with that particular neighbor?
If you agree. Excuse me, if you agree to it, yes.
Well, the, the buffer requirement requires a certain number of canopy trees, understory trees, either evergreen or deciduous and, and shrubs.
Right.
So if there's existing ones, that counts.
Yeah.
If there are proposed ones, that, we have to have the right quantity. So it's a matter of counting them.
Yeah.
And confirming that it meets it.
Yeah.
If it's not enough, then we plant more.
Okay.
If there's enough, then we don't have to plant them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me interrupt you, but thank you.
The second thing I wanted to touch on, as I looked at the map, is the issue of the, the walking trail. The walking trail on the property is designed for the residents. It's not a public walking trail. Obviously, it connects to the public sidewalk, which is fine, but, but generally, that's, it's, it's designed, you know, it's privately owned, it's designed as a private area for, for the residents of the, of the association and the owners of the, the houses. Just like in any apartment complex or condominium complex or planned unit development complex, the amenities in there are designed for the residents, not for the public at large. So that's not uncommon, and generally, it works pretty well. And I would also note that this is sort of an already existing walking trail in that area, and so, in canopy trees. So I think it, it looks to me like it would work really well. It's going to be clearly designated on the plan. So again, it should work well. I just, I don't see an issue with it, but it is not, you know, for clarification. It's not a public, it's not a public area, nor is the open space down at the, a public area. It's not designed to be, for a lot of reasons.
Thank you. You guys ready for Commissioner questions?
If I could, just to add to that, not only is the walking trail privately owned, but so are all the sidewalks, so is the road.
Right.
Everything, all the walking within, it's a private piece of property. So in order to have public access, there would have to be a public right-of-way put through there. So we're not, we're not proposing that. It's not typical for a development like this. But just clarify.
Thank you. Commissioner questions? Commissioner Higley?
My sister lives out of state and she has a homeowners
My sister lives out of state, and she has the homeowners' association. They have onsite management, and she can't even paint her door without running it by the management company. Are you planning on having onsite management or at least a local management company that oversees the conditions and makes sure your properties are being preserved?
Frank, you want to enter? Do you have a try to mic?
That's all right. Thank you. Frank Triano, representing Brainerd Gardens. I live at 1408 Enfield Street. We are not planning on having that type of management structure on this. It's a very small complex, all relatively considering. We do expect there to be a management structure that actually would be within that organization to actually have that authority and have that autonomy to make sure that this does, make sure it happens that way. And I feel for what you're talking about. We will have no problem having a management direction and having it very clear on the property and having the deed and having it be very clear as to when you own a property, as to what the responsibilities are. We're not shying that. We understand that. Ms. Turner was very clear on her concerns, and I respect that. I think she has more experience than I do. I do not live in a PUD. I know she does have one nearby that is effective. We don't want to have those issues. That's not the intention. We don't come to have this commission have any application that we actually put through that's something we're not proud of. I learned a long time ago, our resume is our previous application, and that we have no desire to have our tainted-for applications that we already have coming forward to you. The expectation that we want to have is make sure we actually know what we're doing and we actually do it the proper way. So we'll make sure it's documented properly as best as possible, no question. In regards to those plantings where the doctor is next door, we're happy to work with the doctor as well. If we want to have that conversation, that's no problem at all. That's not the intention, again. And as Dana said, we do have some responsibility, no matter what, but we certainly can enhance and do some things, a little bit more boutique or identified for what she's looking for as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that offer. We're not going to make that a condition, because I know you'll fall through on that. Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So in your experience with this type of development in the past, have some of the conditions taken place that people from the audience have mentioned tonight, or people try to overbuild, try to put sheds on? You know, if you go back and look at some other developments that you may have worked with, have you seen these kinds of issues and become big problems?
Listen, as with any kind of development, whatever it is, even subdivisions, there are sometimes issues. It's inevitable with the development of land, right? One of the big issues at one time in Enfield was if you're locating homes even in a subdivision near wetlands, where people are going to encroach on the wetlands, right? In other words, the last 30 feet of their property may have been in a wetlands area. Now, it was natural, it was left natural, right? But again, what's the homeowner going to do about that? And then, you know, one of the solutions, we worked with the town, was, you know, let put some signage, right, that says, you know, it's a wetland-protected area. But at the end of the day, you know, if somebody's going to act inappropriately, they're just going to do it, okay? And there's, I mean, there's safeguards that the town has to sort of cite somebody that does that or that sort of thing. But at the end of the day, any kind of development, whatever it is, commercial, residential, subdivisions, whatever it is, people can sometimes exceed the limits of what they're supposed to do, whether it's encroaching on somebody else's property, going over their property line, locating a shed or a structure over their property line, because it's sort of in the back. These, I think in some ways, and naturally, what will happen here when you have 42-unit owners, I think eventually, is they will probably hire a management company that will be responsible, you know, for the plowing and the cleanups and the mowing and that sort of thing. And those kind of professional companies, which sort of work for the board, which will be the local owners, they're generally pretty strict about, you know, what they will or will not allow. And it can be, you know what, it can cause some friction within the unit owners, but usually, it works itself out, where people, you know, there's rules, you got to follow them, right? And they were, everybody was aware of them from the beginning, because when you purchase these units, one of the things that's recorded on the land records and everybody has to by law be given a copy of is the homeowners' association booklet. So by and large, you know, most of the owners, they comply with whatever it is. Now, I mean, there was a talk about accessory buildings, and I remember with the units that Ms. Turner was referring to, I think at one time, they came back to the commission and said, "We'd like you to consider allowing us to have a small accessory building that matches our unit in the back." And they had good reason for that, and the commission ultimately decided to allow it. So I don't know futuristically what happens with any project, right? But at the end of the day, the commission felt that that was an appropriate step to take. I don't think it impacted the neighbors. I don't think it degraded the homeowners' properties, and I think it probably worked pretty well. But, you know, that was, that's sort of an individual, sort of different case, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because they had large, they had large properties that each of them had to maintain. And so people were saying, "Well, you know, I need, you know, I'm maintaining this, you know, this full property, so I'd like a shed so I could store my lawnmower and that sort of stuff." So this, the scope of this is a little bit more limited than that.
So was there a condition in place originally for that particular area saying, "No accessory building"?
I can't tell you what you're asking me, and I'm sort of stretching my memory.
Yeah.
I know they went back and got approval to add accessory buildings.
Okay.
So I assume it wasn't part of the original approval.
Okay, yeah. I've had, I haven't had experience with condos here, but I have several friends who live in condo and these type of developments in Florida, and you can't do anything.
Right. Some can be very limited, and again, there's always, there can be struggle with, you know, individual owners wanting to do stuff beyond the bounds of what's allowed. But generally, my experience, and I've done many of these, is they work, they work pretty well, and they, what they're designed to do, obviously, for most people is, in areas like this, older couples, younger couples, they just don't want to have to maintain stuff, they don't want to have to do that stuff. So it's left to the association, which, by the way, you pay a significant, you'll pay a significant fee in here for this stuff. It's not, it's not something that comes inexpensively. And by the way, it takes the burden off the town, right? In other words, the town isn't maintaining and plowing the roads, the association is. So there is, there is a give and take here, and that's, that's part of the benefit to the town, is you get nice quality units, but the responsibility for the infrastructure really lies with the homeowners' association. All homeowners will pay in on a monthly fee, whether it's $200, $300, $400 a month for that, for that service. And that's upfront, that's part of the, part of what you buy into. You pay them immediately when you close, and it's, again, fully disclosed, it's not something that comes with a, you know, a shock, you know what I'm saying? "I didn't expect this." So, but in my, my experience, they work very well. Are they problem-free? No, because no kind of development, no kind of subdivision is problem-free at the end of the day.
Sure. And I've noticed in the places I mentioned in Florida, that most people who move into those places, they don't want to do all that work.
Right.
They don't want to mow the grass, they don't want to, you know, they don't want to have a lawnmower, they don't want to shovel the sidewalk. So seems to me it's not as big a problem as we think.
It certainly, one of the conditions of approval, and I think it's mentioned in staff's report, is, you know, that they want the opportunity to review the homeowners' association docs at some point and sign off on them.
Yep.
As an aside, usually, you see those a bit later in the process, so I don't know if it would be before building permits or before a CO. And the reason I say that is because, you know, you design those ultimately in a way that you think will work, and then the town has to review them. They're not done as part of an approval process necessarily. But, and we have no problem, again, including that as a condition with a sign-off. Whether it's town, you know, some, in some towns, frankly, town council looks at them also. And they just look for particular things that are important to the town, that we've included certain things. So whether it's staff sign-off or staff and town attorney sign-off, that's certainly acceptable laws.
If I can, is that, I'm trying to find it, is that a condition, this?
The homeowners' association?
Yeah.
I noticed that-
So, yes.
Is it 10? Yep, sorry. Yep, thank you so much.
So, yeah. Under 10 and 14 of our conditions. So, you know, the management plan is actually supposed to be submitted with the application, and I'm just wondering if you had a management plan that was prepared for your last development, because it would probably be very similar.
No.
Because it would have been required then as well.
No, we didn't have a-
We should be able to get you one of those, I would think.
So the management plan, something in the MFHD zone, remember, if it's in the, is it in the SRD as well? I don't recall. But it must have been a condition of approval that we provided, because we didn't submit it with the application.
Right.
And in the MFHD, the management plan, what it talks about, talks about leasing, which is really was kind of geared more for the apartment use, so wasn't sure how much that applied here, but we certainly, some of it was relevant, because it talked about maintenance of roads and sidewalks and those kind of things. So that would all, obviously, still apply.
Well, I think it might clarify some things, because if you've got your exclusive-use area and somebody puts a shed or a deck there or starts planting in there, who's going to maintain that?
Yeah, or a garden is another vegetable garden.
You're right. So I think maybe the homeowners' association document would also clarify that.
Yeah, certainly, the homeowners' association document, which is separate from the management plan, would cover all of those things.
Before you hit mine-
To staff, has the open space been decided? Because there was discrepancy on page five and page eight of the plan. It's either 3.45 or 2.0.
Dana, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, it is, it is the 3.45, the larger amount.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I, if I could piggyback on that, if you don't mind, I mean, I'm looking for staff, because they mentioned that they're going to be doing easement instead of deeding that open space to the town. I'm looking for staff to see whether-
Well, the form of open spaces is, you know, you need to approve that. So if it's just a conservation or an easement, that's fine.
So is that, did you add that for one of the conditions here, or is that, it has to be determined?
That was yet to be determined, because I wanted them to clarify it.
Okay. You sure you want to do it after me? All right, right, for sure. All right. So I do have a couple of questions for you, just clarifications. One of the things that is in the document here, I don't know, do you have our document, the staff provided us, the actual application in front of you?
Yeah.
So if you look at, no, it's not numbered. So it'd be page two. And I guess I'm just going to ask, some areas should be flattened such that all EAUs are usable. These will include but not be limited to units for, I'm not going to go all through the unit numbers.
Yeah, we-
You guys know what I'm talking about. Could, yep.
So, yeah, I did reach out to staff regarding that, because I was a little unclear, unsure what the concern was with these particular units. If I just zoom in here, you can see, what we did with these exclusive-use areas is basically find a midpoint between the two, so the exclusive-use zone, as the way it's written in the regulation, only applies to the area behind the unit.
Okay.
So not the sides and the front of the unit, even though those areas could be used as well. The point was that we have at least 2,000 square feet beyond, behind the unit. So what we did, we drew these dotted lines from the back corners of the units, then split it from the midpoint between them, and just tried to split the difference between these areas. And that's how we came up with these areas, is just, you know, a line between the two corners.
Yeah.
Go to the midpoint, go halfway in between, go to the center between all these three, where they all meet, and just divide it all up evenly. And so, and so this documents that, you know, in some cases, you have 2,200, 2,400, 20, out here, 6,500. So it does not include any conservation areas, like this area here does not include the steeper slopes. So there, I think the comment was that in some of them, maybe it was the topography?
Yeah.
Was that the, and so I didn't really get, I guess, clarification on that.
I think it was just, if you're putting out a table or a picnic table or something, and you've got a swale as part of your area, it's going to be slanted. So I was just trying to make sure that they are as flat as possible for their use.
Right. So these units are each incorporating a deck or a patio or a sunroom. You mentioned that they could expand. Yes, they could, and that's anticipated. And I did not include any of those areas in the exclusive-use area. So I left out this, this is a good-sized deck, patio, or enclosed porch, or sunroom area. But if this was a patio, obviously, you could put a, something there. But we need to have slopes for drainage, for things to drain away. It can't be perfectly flat. And so there's some limitations there, admittedly, on the use of them, if they're, where they're not particularly flat. But that's part of, you're buying a particular unit, and you have a grading plan that shows what the grades are like, that's what you're buying. And if, and if your exclusive-use area has a lower spot, then the water's got to drain somewhere. So we'd be happy to work with staff on ways to improve it, and, you know, to make, as long we can still accomplish our goals, but that's the, I think, I think these, so if we go to a grading plan, for example, so here's a grading plan. So that you can see, there's some contours here. There's, you know, very gentle, gentle swales here. I think maybe some of the areas that they're concerned about here, it's a little more, it's a little steeper there between these. It's not flat. It's not. But the site is not perfectly flat.
Right.
So it's, there's going to be some change in grades as you move throughout the site. So we can't make perfectly level exclusive-use areas, or at least it would be difficult to do so. It might require more retaining walls and things like that to try to make it work. And I think a natural, flowing, undulating landscape is appealing and looks natural, looks good. So that's my feeling, but I welcome your feedback.
Would you be willing to look, relook at some of that with staff at administrative level going forward? I guess that's all I'm requesting. Not that anything could be done, at the end of the day, maybe only one or two of those might be able to be improved a little.
Absolutely.
And I'm not looking to make that a condition, I'm just looking to make that, if you're willing to, just look at that when project starts with staff, to see if something could be done. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the next. I'm going to save the big one for last. Mailbox, centralized mailbox. I didn't, can you just show me where that is going to be on the plan?
So our intention, and I apologize for not including this in my narrative, I should have, the intention was to have mailboxes at each driveway.
Oh.
So not to have a centralized. And I realize the MFD regulation talks about a centralized mailbox, so we'd like you to waive that if, now, one criteria that could affect it is the, is the post office may say, "We want a centralized mailbox. We don't want to have to deliver to every house." And if that's the case, then we'll have to provide one and show one on the plan. I mean, my, you know, possibly up here near the entrance, could be in the back here, somewhere where there's, where there's more gap between units and not one of these conservation areas.
The post office is probably going to want it right off the thing by Debbie Lane.
What's that?
The post office is probably going to want it right off the road by the crosswalk from Debbie Lane. Yeah, right there.
Right, so, yeah, right there. So maybe right at the entrance. The thing is, you don't want it too close to the entrance where cars start backing up as the way, you know, you don't want a queue of cars backing out onto Brainerd Road. So-
If you don't mind, I hear, I'm going to staff's opinion on that, if I don't, if you don't mind, centralized versus each homeowner.
So the only reason I brought it up is, one, it's in the regulation.
Yeah, yeah.
But, two, it's actually come up recently with planners' listserv, that the post office is starting to require the centralized locations.
Yeah, okay.
And this was actually for a subdivision that they were doing.
So they don't take up a lot of room, so I think we could easily, you know, configure one, work with staff on a location, if you want us to propose a- one, work with staff on a location, if you want us to propose a location.
Yeah, one of the conditions is a centralized mailbox, no, you know, only because it's getting late, I'm just kind of cutting a little bit. The centralized mailbox building center for resident use must be clarified as to location and accessibility. That's one of the conditions, so...
Yeah, well, there definitely wouldn't be a mailbox building. There wouldn't be like a building that you walk into and have interior mailbox.
Yeah, it's the thing.
This would just be a, a bank of mailboxes.
So, we're just going to leave that condition in and let you define that later on. Okay, moving on from that. Walking trails. We do have to discuss among ourselves whether we want the easement or the deed on the open Traffic study. Okay, so now, probably my pet peeve, only because I don't know why it's in here. Quite frankly, I was astonished to see it was in here. I would think, I would, you know, to me, this is an HOA's decision, whether they want to be able to have solid waste removal and recycling. And I'm going to go back and I'm going to give you a little history why this is a pet peeve with me, because I was, yes, part of that town council, that back in 2002, worked very hard to amend our ordinance so that HOAs and things of that nature could opt in for trash or recycling, as long as they were willing to sign waivers to their roads. There's a whole bunch of criteria. They had to either have a dumpster, or they had to have our trash and recycling, and if they had to opt in to like, I can't remember all the conditions, six conditions. But it was, we left between the HOA to negotiate with the town. And I was astonished to see this as a condition here. And I'm astonished, and I really don't want to leave that condition here. Was that something you guys knew was in here, item 11? And I'm curious why that condition's even here. I think I know why it's here, but I'm not going to say why. I mean, I think it's...
It's in the MFHD regulation, that's why.
Is it in the regulation?
Yeah.
So, basically, the planning and zoning, actually, I didn't know, because I learned something new today. So, the planning zoning commission, actually, when they created this, put that in here, disregarding the council ordinance that allows HOAs to negotiate with the council for trash or recycle pickup.
Yep.
I'm not exactly sure when the MFDD was created, but with the rezone and the single family, when that was adopted, it included all of the sections of the MFDD that were not modified within it. So, and that is within there. That's the only reason I put it in.
I learned something new.
I will say that when it was, when the MFD was first created, it was created as an apartment type of use. And in apartments, you have dumpsters.
Yep.
And so, that's where people bring their trash. And these were, there's going to be tipper barrels. I grew up in Enfield, but I live in Summers now, and we have to pay for our trash removal through, but it's through summer sanitation. I have a tipper barrel, just like you have in, here in Enfield, and it's the same, it works the same way. It's just the association pays a fee for it.
Yeah.
That's the only difference.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make the point. So, we'll, you have, I guess, my question before we have our own discussion, you have no preference either way on that particular item I take, and I'm looking at you, whether you want to have the HOA do it in real private, or whether you want us to remove it.
You know, we really didn't make a total decision on it, but I would, we'd probably rather have it be public, to save the association expense. But we don't have to have that as an obligation.
Okay.
It's something we can actually work with on the association itself.
Something we'll discuss among ourselves.
Okay with that.
Okay. Give me one second to make sure I got all mine. And the other one was, I'm not sure where, if you had to have, or the HOA was going to have a dumpster, where would you put the dumpster? They can't have one either with this one.
I really don't want to have a dumpster.
Yeah.
I think that would be a mistake.
Yeah, I just have it down here as a note.
Dumpster is just invite people to start.
Yeah.
And then, like, the whole neighborhood's going to turn into a place to where I can bring my...
At one in the morning, coming down with stuff and getting in the dumpster, right?
Yeah, right. I think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Personally.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I had it down here as a thing to ask.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I'm just putting in what the regulations are calling for.
All right, now, my question's done. I have things I want to talk about with the commission afterwards. Commissioner Moynihan, you've been kind enough to wait. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think most of the questions have been addressed. I think the plan and the presentation were quite detailed, so, that was nice. I have one or two small items. One of them is, you have good sidewalk network, including the existing trail. The open space part that we discussed, is that going to be deeded to the town, or is that going to remain as part of the association?
The intent is to, for it to remain the association's property, but a conservation easement over it that restricts further clearing, and so, it could, I mentioned, it could be used for passive recreation, but we don't have a walking trail through it. It will be, the part that's cleared, as you can see out here where it's the light, the light green, that's our stormwater maintenance area, so that's going to be accessed for maintenance purposes.
The reason I asked was, if it becomes part of the public property, in that case, people will have access to it. But apparently, if it's not going to be part of the public property, the question doesn't...
That's not the intent.
All right, that's good. Number two, on your plan, I do see roadway, sidewalk crossing, roadway paint marks, at least in two locations. Now, that's public roads. That's not part of the...
The two along Brainerd Road are within the town right of way, yeah.
Right. If there was a painted walkway like that, going from the development west to the convenience store, and then therefore, to the place of worship's that are just on the northwest corner, is that become a town public works issue, or that doesn't, so that does not affect the application or applicants?
We have no jurisdiction in the right of way.
Okay. So, we cannot make that as a condition unless the applicants offer?
I don't think we can.
I don't know if we, are we allowed to affect a town road?
Yeah. That's why I asked the question of the staff, I'm not sure.
No, no.
So, that's not a good idea, okay.
Town council and...
And the next part was, there's good berm and landscaping proposed along Washington Road and entire corner, and I'm sure sightline, et cetera, from traffic point of view, have been looked into very carefully. I just want to make sure that it is so, because 10, 20 years from now, those trees do grow up, and your sightline is affected.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will maintain the sightline as part of the management plan. Yep.
Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Are there any other questions for the applicant? Going once, twice, three times before we close this public hearing. Do you guys have something you want to wrap up?
Yeah, before we close, so, again, we're back to the technical question of approval versus effective dates.
Right, well, what we came up with, don't know if this will work, but a condition on the special permit, that says something to the effect of this, special permit 3061 shall not be recorded on the Enfield land records until after the effective date of the zoning map amendment approved under 3060ZA.
Should be approved, but not recorded.
But not effective.
Yeah, the special permit's not effective until it's recorded, as you know. So, we would have a condition in the special permit that said you couldn't record it until the map amendment was effective.
I think that makes sense.
Right. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Who knows?
I'm not a lawyer.
Who knows what a higher power may think, but I think it makes sense.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, us, before we close the public hearing for staff?
I don't, other than that, no.
Because then, as you know, that's it, it's up between us to discuss staff.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
But just before the record is closed, I do want to say that I did receive a final comment from engineering.
Yeah.
On April 18th, and John Cabibbo stated, "Drated study indicates that the proposed detention system will attenuate the design storms to ensure zero increase in peak runoff. One minor comment is general note number one, contact phone number for engineering is 860-253-6366. This should be corrected on the final plans." I think he tells you this a lot.
Any other staff comments with the applicant? No? Entertainer motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lefakis. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye. The record showed a public hearing is closed. Staff seems to... Done, check in, check in. So, I guess we have a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss.
I'd like to make a motion to approve PH 3061, 242, 274, and 284, Brainerd Road, application for multifamily housing development, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC applicant, Anthony Triano Jr. and Petronella, Washington Associates of Enfield LLC owners, MAP 77, Lot 68 and 67, and MAP 62, Lot 319, R44 Zone.
Thank you. Thank you, Secretary DeGray, Vice Chairman DeGray. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lefakis, discussion. I have, go ahead, you first, please.
Just one thing, I would like to remove any accessory buildings, no accessory buildings, site specific 12.
Okay.
To be added on this.
You'd like to have that totally, that condition totally removed?
Totally removed.
So, is, okay.
At this time, I don't feel there's a need for accessory buildings.
Okay. There's a motion made to, did I hear something chirping? There's a motion made to remove item 12, which would be any mention of accessory buildings. Is there a second?
Would it be clearer if it said, "may not contain accessory buildings," instead of leaving it? I could live with that.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, we have a discussion. Are you all set, Nick?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I wanted to propose something, I wanted to propose...
Hashway isn't an accessory building.
14C, saying specific control of, in prohibitions of external structures, including sheds, decks, patios, fire pits, and other accessories. It would be part of the management plan, specifically stated.
Okay, so, that's a little bit different, okay? That's a little bit different than Vice Chairman DeGray's motion, because she was, she wanted, she put the motion in that was to totally remove, so they can't have accessory buildings at all, not even approved by the commission. Nick put one in there that said the MFD may not contain accessory buildings or uses, and I would imagine means, that means striking out as approved by commission. And well, let me, before you do, let me get to Kenny's. Kenny's making one that would probably mean we would take out 12 and add, I'm not even going to try to rehash all the verbiage for 14C that you just added, which makes it kind of restrictive, but leaves it up to the HOA, I take it.
Yeah. Sheds are a big issue.
Yeah.
Microphone.
Yeah, your mic's not on, Kenny.
Sorry.
All right, Ginny?
If, yeah, if you wanted to take out sheds, you know, you could do that. I'm assuming you're not, you don't want to prohibit decks, patios, and fire pits, and those kinds of things. I don't know.
I wouldn't be opposed to patio, or, because they already got a deck, or screened-in porch, or whatever, three, and they had a patio because they want a fire pit. I don't care about that. I'm just concerned that on Washington Road, Brainerd Road, you're going to see sheds back there, playscapes, as you're driving down the road, because that's really their backyards. And so, now, you're going to start cluttering up their backyard, you're going to see their backyard from the road, and you're going to start seeing a lot of clutter, is what I'm trying to prevent, because it's going to start to look a little too much.
Did you have something you wanted to add? Were you all set?
Yeah. How big is the actual yard? You know, it's dimensions, square?
2,000.
Exclusive use areas have to be a minimum of 2,000 square feet.
That's what I thought. That's a fairly good-sized yard, correct?
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't be opposed to accessory structures, as long as they had to go by the homeowners' association to approve it. In other words, you can't just go and nail up four boards and say, there's my accessory structure. It has to have certain conditions that the homeowners' association would adhere to, not us.
So, it sounds like you're kind of agreeing with what Kenny's proposal. That's basically what you were saying, that's what you were saying, it had to be homeowners' approval, association approval for any accessory buildings and similar things.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure the yard was big enough.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I wanted it specific to the management plan.
Yeah.
That those items would be addressed and controlled.
In the management plan.
And/or prohibited, if they decide.
So, if I can, just, if I can, just try to keep this going a little bit. If, like, if we added Kenny's 14C, would actually mean that condition 12 would get eliminated, because there's no need to have that redundancy.
No.
Correct? Correct? If you're adding 14C, there's no reason to have condition 12.
Could we hear his again? I don't think so.
Well, it does say, "as approved by the commission," though.
It does, I know.
That means, that means it comes to...
Had to come in front of the planning zoning again, if they wanted to put an accessory building in.
Do we want those accessories?
It doesn't, you know, that's, condition 12 does say that if someone wanted to have an accessory building, they got to come back in front of the planning zoning commission.
And it's part of our...
Okay, so, do you feel still need to eliminate it?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's do it one at a time. There's a motion on the floor to eliminate condition 12. Is there a second? Going once, twice, there's no second to remove item 12 at this time. So, that motion has failed. There's, Nick made a motion to add, the MFHD may not contain accessory buildings or uses. That motion was made. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There is a second on that. So, we're going to have to have a vote on that. So, number 12 would now read, "The MFHD may not contain accessory buildings or uses." And there's no sense having, as approved by the commission, because you're saying "may not contain," so we would strike that out. So, there's a motion made in second on that. All those, before we have that vote, I would like to hear Kenny's 14C, because that might influence me how I vote, to be frank with you.
Here's the way I originally wrote it.
Okay.
And I said, 14C, specific, which would, this would be part of the management plan, "specific control of and/or prohibitions of external structures, including sheds, decks, patios, fire pits, and other accessories."
Would be part of the management plan.
Well, you leave it up to the management to do that.
Okay.
It would not come to the commission.
Okay. So, I'm just, I thank you for reading that again, we might get back to that. Let's have a vote on number 12 now, because I just wanted to hear what you had there. So, again, I'm going to read, wait a mo, what the change that was made in second, it would read for item 12. "The MFHD may not contain accessory buildings or uses." Okay? There's a motion made in second. All those in favor of changing condition 12 to, for that, the way I read it, you know, we're not going to do a roll call, but signify by saying aye. So, the record shows that was four to two to change 12 to read that. So, condition 12 is now reads, "The MFHD may not contain accessory buildings or uses." Bingo. All right, so now, we're going to move on to the next one. Is there another change? Okay, one I would like to change is, I would like to remove, or, well, I'm not, not remove, item 11 of the general conditions. I would like it to read, "The solid waste removal and recyclers services shall be decided by the HOA, not by, not by private contractor." Well, I think it's pretty unfair if we do here, and we have all these other ones that we're allowing to be able to have that condition by town council. I know the MFHD doesn't have that in the regulation, but we're allowing all the other 55 communities and all the other condo associations, if they want to, can opt in. condo associations, if they want to, can opt in. I find it pretty appalling, to be honest with you, that we had our regulation that doesn't allow this to be able to opt in. I'm not saying they want to. And their roads are no different than ours, than those other ones we've already allowed opted in.
No, they're not. They don't meet the conditions. Private roads do not meet town.
All the privates. I'm just, my point is, there's no difference between these proposed roads and the condos and over 55 communities that we've already allowed to opt in by council ordinance back in 2002. I guess I'm really perplexed as to why we would single out these, which to me is, you can call NFH, whatever you want to call it, it's an HOA, just like a condo or an over 55 community, saying, well, everybody else can opt in if they want to, but you can't. Well, Mayfield's an apartment complex. This is not an apartments complex. As the applicant is nice enough to bring up to ours, Ginny, is that this is a little bit different. This is not an apartment complex. Now, I might, I might feel the same way with an apartment complex, to be quite honest with you, like Mayfield, but this is not an apartment complex. This is structurally no different than the over 55 community at Abbey Wood, or the one across from the Senior Center, even if it's not 55, or, or I'm trying to think of the, Shaker Heights, or the one that's off Mullen Road, and even some of the other condo units. They, they might not opt in, but they have the option of opting in. So I would, I, I don't usually like to do this, but as a chairman, I'm making a motion that item 11, just be rewarded that solid waste removal and recycling services shall be decided by the HOA. And that's my motion. Is there?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner LaFakas. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of changing item 11 to state that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think it's four to two. So it's four to two to change item 11, so that the solid waste and recycling services will be decided by the HOA. Until it's an HOA, you have to take it away yourself. Well, you know how that works, because, you know, HOA comes in usually when you get X amount of buildings. Yeah, yeah.
Can we just ask staff to provide us with the section of the town council that says that so that we can change our regulations to match?
Yeah, that's what we do to regulations. Yes, absolutely. That's on my, I already have that when I saw this.
Okay. I did not see that in.
Yeah. And I don't mean to get so emotional about it, but I was part of that when we went through all that discussion. It was a long, long time to, no, it was a long time, it was a long time for us to implement that, and a lot of discussions among the councilors and staff to do that, so.
But if we have it, then we can change it.
Yep, absolutely. Is there any other changes to conditions? Looking down, anything you think we've missed? Seeing none. There's a motion made to accept the, this, or approve this application with the conditions, the 31 conditions and the amended ones.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH 3061 with the amended condition of number 11, solid waste removal and recycling services shall be decided by the HOA. And number 12, the MFHD may not contain accessory buildings or uses.
Thank you. And with the 31 conditions?
31 conditions.
There's a motion made. Is there a second? By secretary, is there a second?
Could we include, excuse me, could you just include the effective date? I believe if you'd like me to read it, the special.
That would be good, because I, I don't remember where it was.
Special permit 3061 shall not be recorded. I can't read his writing. Shall not be recorded on the Enfield land records until after the effective date of the zoning map amendment approved under public hearing, 360ZA.
Thank you. That'll be the accepted date. There's a motion made. Is there a second? Second day by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion? Roll call whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
Lou Fiore?
Yes.
Linda DeGray?
Yes.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Karam Majmadar?
Four.
Ken Holinsky?
Four.
Nick LaFakas?
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all set. Good luck. When do you guys plan on starting? So you think it'd be, might be starting in '23, or you think it'd be more in '24? Great, thank you. I should have asked that before. I apologize. Thank you so much. Does anybody have a bathroom break? I'm sorry, everyone, some commissioners need to take a, a quick break, so we're just going to recess for five minutes. I know it's getting late, we know it's getting late, but we're going to recess for five minutes, please. I'm going to make a motion to call this meeting back to order, Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we go on to the next application, I will ask for a motion to extend our meeting till midnight tonight.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, to extend our meeting to midnight tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record showed that we've done our due diligence. We're willing to stay till midnight. Now we're going to move on. Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready, because I know you've been off the chair for a bit, on PH 3064.
Is that?
It's the sign.
3064. Okay, got it. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH number 3063, 25 Hazard Avenue, application for a site plan modification and freestanding canopy Chick-fil-A Inc. Are we doing six?
64.
64.
Oh, we're doing 64?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It'd be, strike that public hearing, number 3064, 561 Hazard Avenue, application to install a 48-square-foot pylon sign in BL Zone, Connecticut Sign Service, applicant O'Reilly Automotive Stores Inc., owner MAP 110, lot 387, BL Zone.
Hi. How are we doing? Applicants come forward and identify themselves to the record. Thank you.
My name is John Morrison. I own Connecticut Sign Service, 500 Leffler Park Road.
Thank you.
Tony Graves from O'Reilly Auto Parts.
You've been here a while.
Yeah, just give it.
Give him the map. We usually don't allow people to come up to the dice.
Thanks very much.
No, not really. I was just kind of watching a little bit, paying attention.
You.
Matt, we'll just pass them down. Yeah. Oops, sorry.
That's what I heard.
What's the difference? What's the difference?
That's smaller.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see it now. Yeah, here you go. Yeah, yeah, I see it now. Yeah. I see it. Go ahead, we have, go ahead.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
So the, the smaller sign, the one that's not quite as, as long horizontally, is what's allowed. That's 32 square feet. What we're asking for is 48 square feet, four foot by 12 foot. So they're both the exact same height. What we're asking for is 12 feet in width instead of eight feet in width. What we, I guess the property, the site plan was approved in 2018, including this four-by-12 sign, but the sign wasn't part of the application. It was shown in the drawings. There was no issue with it, but it was, we had to come back for the signage after the fact. There's a couple of unique things about this property compared to a typical standalone box auto parts store. One of those is that there's not an entrance from Hazard Avenue to go into this store. The entrance is through Skidico Plaza. And as of this time, O'Reilly has not secured signage on that main pylon sign where the actual entrance is. So when you're, when you're driving down Hazard Avenue and you see the sign for the shopping center, there's absolutely no indication that that's the only way to get to O'Reilly Auto Parts. And this sign in and of itself doesn't solve that, but it does give a, a much easier-to-read traditional display of their logo. Another unique thing about this property is that the, the regulations for signage in this area require the sign to be 10 feet back from the street line. With much of Hazard Avenue, the street line would also be the property line, but here we have a setback, we have a right-of-way, a state right-of-way, I believe, for Hazard Avenue, that comes back about 25, 30 feet from the curb line. So where the, from our belief is that the intent of the zoning regulations would be that the signs be 10 feet back from the road, easily visible, not super large. Here, we're back about 45 feet from the, because to observe the 10-foot property line setback, we have the additional setback of the right-of-way. There's no way to ask you for variance to, to put the sign out on the property that's not owned by O'Reilly, nor are we asking to. But this sign at 12 feet, as far back from the road as it is located, really would look smaller than, than a 32-square-foot sign that was back at a, at a 10-foot setback from the road. So it's not like we're really going to do some huge billboard. It's a, it's a relatively nominal increase, which, as was explained to us, is within your discretion to approve or not approve, depending on how you feel about the impact of the sign. The, let's see. So the driving factor on the 30 square, 32 square feet that's allowed, as it was explained to us, is that the property is less than three acres. So freestanding sign, this is an email we got from Rick Rochell, and it said that a freestanding sign on a business-owned property less than three acres in size is a maximum of 32 square feet per side. The shopping center that we're really incorporated in, separate property, not the same ownership, but the shopping center itself is about nine acres. So it would be consistent with the, with the development of the, or the interpretation of the regulations, if this wasn't a separate site pad, because it's in that same shopping center, part of that same development with that main pylon sign, that there would typically be a little bit more square footage of signage allowed.
Okay. Oh, all right. I'm like, okay. All right, thank you. Is, is there questions from the commission? Commissioner DeGray?
I'm always the first one. Lots of questions.
Okay.
Okay, so am I to understand that you're not allowed to put signage on the, the sign that's the?
For the plaza.
The plaza?
We don't own the plaza.
Right, but it's still part of, you're still part of that property, even though you own your piece of property. It's just like at the mall. They're all subdivided, they individually own. That's why I'm asking.
From our indication right now, the plaza owner?
Yeah.
Is not giving us permission to do so.
Is not allowing you to. Okay. Secondly, there is an O'Reilly's further up in Stafford?
Yes, ma'am.
And they just have O'Reilly's on the side of their building, on their building, and it's set back just as far as this one is going to be, if not further. So I guess I'm a little confused why you want a bigger sign.
No, I get that. And so if you look at our Stafford Springs store, it's more of an open area.
Right.
It doesn't have as many buildings next to each other. You have.
This is pretty open, sir. I've lived here all my life.
No. But if, when you look at this, this plaza where our store is going to be at, there's, you have the plaza, but there's no really O'Reilly entrance, where in Stafford Springs, there is an O'Reilly entrance. This one, we actually are sharing the entrance between the plazas. So we probably wouldn't have needed a bigger sign if it wasn't, if we had our own entrance. But since we are sharing an entrance, and that entrance is a little bit, it's further away from our building, it's going to be a little bit harder for customers to, you know, to decide where we're going to go. And then you got, also got a gas station on the other side of our site that is, it's harder to see as well if our sign is smaller. And it's realistically, 4 feet is not a big deal, but it's a big deal for us.
You have to understand, there was a bank there.
Yeah.
That was my bank.
Yep.
They didn't have a, a freestanding sign. So I'm, I, I guess I'm, and this is in an overlay district, so to make this even bigger than what is allowed is a concern to me.
I, and it, the difference between a bank and, you know, and an auto parts store I, and the difference between a bank and, you know, in an auto parts store is, you know, truthfully, you have your money there, you're going to go there. But you know, for us, we don't, you know, we, we're trying to get customers to come into us, you know, to buy stuff, not to come pick up their own, you know, their product, you know. So it's a little bit of a different kind of business between a bank and an auto parts location. So it's nice to pop and have that pop sign to be able, people want to come to your location. It's a big part of that. Not to be crude or whatever.
No, it's just... No, I'm, it's just I don't understand why the plaza owner won't allow you to do signage.
I wish I knew, and I, you know, maybe if I take him out to dinner, he'll say yes. I don't know.
Maybe.
Looking down the line, questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Holinsky.
I wasn't on the commission when the plan was approved for your building, but are you having signage on the building as well?
Yes, we plan on having signage.
And where would it be? Would it be on the, that opening side, the side I can see on your picture?
Yeah, only on that one elevation.
Yes.
Okay, so would it be like above the door or something?
Yes.
Okay. So I've seen your sign above the door in Stafford, and it's pretty big.
Again, it's, I, again, if you look at this, you also have the ATM that's still there, that's still being used with the roundabout. So when you're driving up to Hazard Street on the right-hand side, there is, I know people think it's very visible, but when you're driving up Hazard Street, you still have the ATM that's right there. You still have trees that are right there that also get blocked away. Having that extra sign pop off on the side of the road, I think, would be easier for customers to see that we are there.
Okay, I guess, I guess I don't see the reason for a larger sign, frankly. If you're going to have the signage on the building, and it's a pretty imposing building too, I go to that gas station, and your wall is like way above the, the side of your building is way above the gas station. So it's an imposing building. I congratulate you. And it's, you know, it's a nice building. It's going to be a good size and a good thing for us. But I can't see where people are going to miss you, to tell you the truth.
They do, trust me.
Well, do you have any?
I have a total, I run a total of 84 locations.
Okay.
And I'll tell you that signs do make a big difference, and in locations that the signs, we have been not able to get larger signs. It does take a, we're there for years, and customers still come in, "I can't believe you're here." I don't, I never, I didn't even notice that you were here, because the signs are a lot smaller, we've been put on restrictions, things like that. So even years later, after being open for so long, that customers, you know, come in and say that, "I didn't realize you were here," and they've been in town their whole life. So the signs do make a difference, and the size of the signs make a difference. I, trust me, I wouldn't be here today if I didn't think it was important for our team members to, and the revenue that would come in, you know, and having customers, the more people we have, the more people, you know, more business we have, the more people we could employ, the more people we could employ, the better it is for the community, you know.
Do you have any data that states how many people who purchase items from your store are brought in by the sign?
No.
Marketing-type data, anything like that?
I don't have any marketing data. All I know is from being in the auto parts industry since I was 16 years old, that's good data.
Okay, okay. All right.
I only really had, I don't have any questions. I just have one thing I just want to read for the record, and I could wait till later on, but I'm sure you guys are aware of this, I'm sure staff has told you this, but I'm just going to share this with you, because it's probably where I'm coming from. So I'm going to read it verbatim here. Although Section 10 through, 10 dot 30 dot 2 allows for such an appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission, such an approval would set a precedent for any future sign usage denials by staff. The more proper course of action would be for the variance procedures where a valid hardship could be taken into consideration by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's kind of where I'm coming from. Is there any other questions for the commission? Commissioner DeGray?
I just thought of something through the chairman to staff.
Yep.
Wouldn't it be allowed to have signage on the wall facing 190 as well as the front of the building? That's right on the building that says O'Reilly, and then...
They may divide their signage up on either of those walls, I believe, yes. So you're talking about the one that is facing Hazard Avenue?
Right.
And the one that's facing into the plaza?
Right.
Yes.
To be on two sides? All right, thank you.
Are you saying we're allowed, just to clarify this, are you saying we're allowed to have signs on both sides of the wall?
I believe that's what staff just said.
Okay.
We're not done. Staff is going to, if anybody wants to speak for or against, and you don't have to get up, probably no one is. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone who wants to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, doubt, wait, stop for me.
May I ask, the statement that you read, who was that?
Pardon?
The statement that you read?
Yes.
Who was that from?
That's on page, Rochelle, the application in front of you. It's on page three, right at the top of page three.
Okay.
Laurie, I think based upon the street frontage, there's an allowed square footage of total signage for the, for the building, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. So, yeah, Rick does most of our sign reviews. Total sign area of any lot, sum of attached and freestanding shall not exceed 2 square feet per linear feet, foot of the front wall or walls of the buildings on the site. No individual sign may exceed the area of 300 square feet unless they apply for a type C. And front wall for the purposes is the main entrance. I don't see any reason why they couldn't put it along the road.
I know it's getting late. We have more business to do.
Yep.
We can continue this and get a clarification from Rick, unless you want to act tonight and close it. I don't, neither Laurie nor myself work with the sign regs to the level that Rick does.
I don't think we need to have that, in my personal opinion, because that would be giving the applicant later on a decision somewhere.
Right.
Yep.
But it's good to know, and it makes something worth exploring, staff. Any more questions for the applicant? Anything you'd like to guys want to add?
No.
No more question with commissions? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
My mic was not on. I apologize, my mic was not on. Basically, we decided to close the public hearing. There's a motion made by Chair, Vice Chairman Higley, second already by Commissioner Holinsky to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record showed it was unanimous, close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr.?
Yep, I'm going to re-read it, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing 3064, 48-foot, or square foot per side freestanding sign, where the regulations only allow for 32 square foot per side, signed at 561 Hazard Avenue. O'Reilly's Auto Parts owner, Dave Hemming, Connecticut Sign Service, applicant representative, map 110, lot 0387, BL Zone, Skidco Design Overlay District, per the reference plans, reports, and application materials listed herein with the following 16 modifications and/or conditions of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holinsky. Motion made by the secretary, second by Commissioner Holinsky, discussion. I think basically we heard two different options here for, for this applicant, either ZBA or possibly another additional sign on the building itself. So seeing that, I'm not inclined to approve, so. Any other comments? Seen on roll call? Do we have to give reasons for denial? No, okay.
Louis Fiore?
Denied.
Linda DeGray?
Denied.
Virginia Higley?
Against.
Kieran Majboudar?
Or.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Against.
Nick LaFakas?
Against.
And John Petronilla is against.
The record showed it was six to one to deny this application. There are other avenues to proceed through, huh? Good luck with those.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary. We're now moving on to PH 3063.
Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearing at their regular meeting on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7 o'clock PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning public hearing number 3063, 25 Hazard Avenue, application for a site plan modification for a freestanding canopy, Chick-fil-A Inc., and Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC applicants. Paramount Commons at Enfield LLC owner, map 45, lot 8, BR Zone.
Thank you. Just so we can kind of set the stage, some fellow commissioners understand too, they have this application, and they also have an application for flood 45. This is just going to be a quick, kind of quick overview tonight, because there's some other paperwork that has to be done. So we are probably going to be table, leaving the public hearing open and tabling this, and they're going to be coming back, I send them next meeting. So I just want to let you know, we shouldn't be taking any action on this tonight, just to get the, start to get the ball rolling.
Correct. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Sutins. I'm an attorney at Hurwitz Sagrans, lost but enough with offices in Milford, here representing Chick-fil-A as the applicant before you. Joey Fonseca is our engineer from Bowler, sitting right to my left. And then behind me, Colby Webb is the operator of the store. I think you probably have seen him here before. And Tony DeSanzo, who's our senior project manager, is also here. But as you said, I did want to note, we have the new business A, flood number 45. We'd ask to table that tonight. Joey will just point out where that line is for you, so you have a basic understanding of how that's relevant to the rest of the application, but we'll get into those details at the next meeting. And as noted in the staff report, and as the chairman just noted, we had some comments from staff. We have a number of the things that staff had asked for that we'll present to you tonight as part of Joey's presentation. Sorry. And so in particular, some additional information about the canopies and the landscaping that staff asked for. So just by a quick overview, we are here for a site plan modification and for a special permit associated with the front, meaning the Hazard Avenue canopy that's associated with this. I think as noted in the staff report, freestanding canopies are allowed under certain conditions, all of which we believe we meet under Section 5.10.2, with that notation that everybody seems to be in agreement that there is a missing word "not," because otherwise a canopy would not be freestanding. So I think with that, I'll turn it over to Joey. We can walk you through those details. If you have any other questions, as we indicated, we know that we'll be back at next month's meeting, and if anything else that you want to see in connection with the request, we're happy to present, get it together for you. And we will make the presentation available. We'll submit it to staff, so you can get a copy of that material as well.
Thank you.
Joey?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joey Fonseca. I'm project manager with Bowler Engineering. So I'm just going to kind of quickly just go through the existing conditions here, and then I'll go into the site plan and just kind of scroll through some of the plans that we've, that we've prepared since, that we'll be able to share with you all this evening. So on the screen right now is just the existing conditions there. So in, in blue is highlighting the flood line that runs across, flood zone that runs across the site. In sort of a beige color is the existing building, and then in the gray shaded area indicates the existing drive-through location. It's a single entrance into the drive-through, two ordering stations merge into a single lane, and then you exit out of the plaza. So that's, everyone's probably well aware of the site. On the screen now is just a rendering of the proposed changes. And mostly, this is just to increase efficiency in the drive-through. This is kind of the standard prototype for new Chick-fil-A's. Chick-fil-A is always, their drive-through operations are always evolving, and this store was constructed, I think, about eight, maybe eight, nine years ago. And we're just making upgrades to increase the overall efficiency of the drive-through, just get our meals delivered to the customers quickly. And to do that, two new additions to the drive-through operations for all Chick-fil-A's are canopies. One's a freestanding canopy at the order boards. Currently, there are two smaller canopies over the order boards. Those will be removed and replaced with a larger canopy, basically, you know, is able to hold about two and a half cars, three cars within that canopy. It also allows team members that are in the drive-through to be able to take orders, you've seen that, take orders, take payment, keep some out of the elements, some of our, we didn't have a harsh winter, but when we do have harsh weather. Beyond the order board, where under the existing condition, you'd merge into a single lane and then approach the pickup window, a second outside lane is being proposed here, so you'll have two lanes from order to just past the pickup window, where then you would merge down to a single lane to the existing exit width, and then you'd exit out of the plaza as well. So at the order, at the pickup window, again, another canopy that's, that's within an inch of the building, it's not attached to the building, it is its own freestanding structure. But again, that's, that's the meal delivery side, where team members will be delivering meals to the customers, you know, multiple cars at a time there. So along with that, there is an existing retaining wall that exists on the, along Hazard Ave. Since we're moving the drive-through lane closer to the entrance drive, that retaining wall will actually have to extend a little bit further down the drive-through lane. The max height is approximately four feet, so it goes from about a foot and a half, two feet, to four feet at its max, and then it's just going to tie into the existing retaining wall that's there today. And again, that's just because as the grade rises from the existing drive-through lane to the entrance road there. So the three trees that are on this rendering today along the drive are expected to stay. We're going to be protecting those trees to remain. There are some shrubs that are going to be removed within that sloped area. But the rendering that's in front of you today does show some proposed plantings throughout the area alongside the drive-through, as well as some of the islands and the parking that I'll get to next. So with this addition of the drive-through expansion, it adds about 1,800 square feet of additional impervious area. In order to, to sort of net zero increase on that, we've made some modifications to the Chick-fil-A site itself, as well as some parking off-site. So again, 1,800 square feet was an increase. There was a patio area south of the building that is going to be removed and will be landscaped. There are three islands to the, I can circle with my mouse, that are on the, sort of west of the Chick-fil-A restaurant. Currently, these are just pavement striped, similar to this condition here. We're removing six spaces and creating a landscape and island here. The parking still conforms with the overall plaza, the total parking count, I believe it's 300 and, so 1,334 required, and that will be provided once these six spaces are removed. And so with that landscaped area, with the patio being removed, that gets us to basically a zero increase in impervious coverage here. With the addition of some, you know, additional plantings in this plan, as well as a landscape plan that you all receive next week, we'll show the plantings, the trees, we sort of mimic the, kind of the planting, that scheme that's there today with a tree in the middle of the planting, and then some shrubs around it. And then again, throughout the Chick-fil-A side, drive-through, you know, the previous patio area, it's just a mixture of shrubs and high grasses, ornamental grasses through there. As I mentioned before, there is, you know, a portion of this is within the flood storage zone there. This, the work that's being done for the drive-through expansion is in a cut, so we're not filling any flood storage, we're actually gaining some additional flood storage in there. Like I said, the wall at its highest is about four feet. We can expand on that more, and we'll certainly provide a memo to accommodate that, but it is a cut situation. We're not filling through here, so we're not dispersing any flood, flood storage volume there. So that being said, let me just scroll through some of these slides, just because I do have some updates on the candidacy.
Before you leave that, so, so when I look at this, and I hope the commission doesn't mind, I just, I don't want to leave this slide.
Sure.
So when I'm thinking of this going forward, this is not just Chick-fil-A's changes, this is Paramount's change too, because you're going off into the other parking area. That's how I should think this. Thank you.
And that was something that we had discussed with Paramount in connection, because that is, as you know, outside the Chick-fil-A East area, but was designed to make the overall center conforming.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
More conforming.
Yeah, more, yeah, I like that.
More conforming.
Yeah, thank you.
And this plane just kind of highlights in red where sort of the limits of the existing... And this plan just kind of highlights in red where sort of the limits of the existing drive-through lane is, just kind of give you a feel for what the expansion looks like with that existing outside lane. There are some existing light poles that are going to be relocated, the red dot, it might be hard to see here, there are three light poles that are, that are just going to be slightly relocated, they're just going to be pulled back from where they exist today. Again, this will be submitted as part of the full package as well, but it is a photometric plan just showing those poles that are, that are going to be, that are going to be relocated, as well as the recess cans in the canopies themselves. There's eight within the meal delivery canopy that are just downlit, recess cans, and then six within the face-to-face ordering canopy as well. So the original lighting plan for this development was prepared by others, so we don't have access to that lighting file, but what we've done is kind of prepared a lighting plan just showing the limits of the new lighting, and we can, we can share the approved lighting plan as well, but it, it doesn't, it's obviously a little bit brighter underneath the canopies, but as far as the overall parking lighting and the drive-through lighting, it's, it remains similar to what the approved plan was. Again, a formal landscape plan will be submitted, it's, it's part of the rendering here, so it calls out the individual plants that are, that are going to be proposed here. And then these are some of the canopy, just some architectural drawings, just showing, kind of calling out what the different features are of the canopy, as well as heights, there are some renderings here to kind of give you a better feel for, these aren't, these are just sort of a quick rendering, just showing you where they are relative to the Chick-fil-A building, and you can see where that truck is, is the order canopy, freestanding canopy, and then you've got the, the meal delivery canopy on the side there, and I've got another view here, again, just showing the meal delivery canopy side with the access road to the plaza on the right side. And these are just, these aren't obviously from the site, these are just kind of stock images of just generally what these canopies look like, with just some materials and, and how they're, the general look of, of both the face-to-face canopy, the ordering canopy, and the meal delivery canopy. Again, this is, this is a smaller version of it, the, the proposed canopy for this location is, is a double width, so it would cross both lanes, but again, similar material, similar, you know, color scheme to the, the order canopy. These are just architectural drawings, just showing the width, et cetera, and I think that's, that's, that's really it for, as far as, I know some of this is, is new material, and all this will be submitted to the board for review, but just, just wanted to kind of give a quick sort of overview on, on the proposal tonight, so happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions tonight? Commissioner Holinsky? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious, so the ordering will be done normally on electronic basis through a microphone type thing, so you'll have both lanes running?
Correct.
Okay, and then you go around to pick up, so how do you pick up on the outer lane?
So during off-peak times, the drive-through operates just as a traditional drive-through, there's menu boards, you, you drive up to the menu board, there's two, and you would order your meals, the operator has a flexibility to merge those two lanes back into a single lane where you pick up at, like, like you do today. During peak times, as you've seen it, there's team members out there within the drive-through, they're taking orders at the order points, you're not ordering at those digital boards anymore, you're, the team members are actually taking your orders, and then you're staying in your lane, going over towards the meal delivery side, where again, you've got team members there delivering to the inside lane and the outside lane, delivering, there's pavement striping in the drive-through to allow the team members to, you know, access along, you know, along vehicles to deliver meals. And again, this is, this is a standard prototype for all-new construction, similar to Manchester, Connecticut, Connecticut's a new store, they have a similar.
How do you keep it safe for the team members?
So the team members all have safety vests, they're all trained to, to be taking orders, delivering meals, there's painted crosswalks near the, the door where they're going to be coming out of. Again, this is all a very slow-moving drive-through, you're not, you're not, you know, rapidly driving through here, and there's team members within the ordering zone, as well as the meal delivery zone. So there's constant team members there with vests on, directing, you know, directing cars, you know, to stay in their lanes, move forward, exit, you know, merge, et cetera, so they're, they're trained, and they're, and they're visible.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions tonight for Commissioner Majmounar?
Yeah, I only have one comment, it's not necessarily a question, but once they're at the ordering canopy, if there is a backup of, say, four cars, then you're going to block the trash bin location, do you anticipate more than four or five car backup within the lane, because you're going from single to dual lane at that point, so maybe you're not, but I just thought I would ask.
Sure. Yeah, so the, the drive-through entrances, if you, is that, that's the same screen, right, in front of you?
Yes.
So this mouse here, where the, cursor is here, is the drive-through entrance, the trash enclosure is on this, on this side, which actually gets accessed from the west.
The other side?
Correct, yeah, yep, so they're not, they're not blocking access.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you guys all set for tonight for your presentation?
Yeah, I think otherwise it would be if there's anything additional, obviously we'll address the rest of staff's questions, but if there was anything else that the commission wanted to see based on, you know, what we had preliminarily, just let us know, and that's, we'll be happy to get that, both to staff and then to you before the next meeting.
We'll work through staff, and I guess we're, we're on target to see you on the May eleventh meeting, I believe.
That's right.
Okay, so we're all set with that, entertain a motion to table this, we're going to keep the public hearing open.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to table this, but keep the public hearing open, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and I take it from your comments that F L D would also be tabled, we don't need to, so we'll automatically table that, so you guys can, you guys can go home.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks. So that's tabled. Item D, PH thirty-sixty-three, is, public hearings kept open and it's tabled. Entertain a motion to take PH thirty-sixty-five Z A off the table, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky to take PH thirty-sixty-five Z A off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The public hearing is still open, Attorney Landelina, just to let you know.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Carl Landelina, four eighty-seven Spring Street, Windsor Locks, representing the applicant, Fast Track Realty LLC. I'm joined to my right by Andrew Borja, who is the principal of Fast Track. I have a few documents I'd like to hand to staff, and they can get them to you.
Attorney Landelina, you weren't going to be reading all this to us tonight, were you?
No, just a few lines here and there.
That's okay.
At seven o'clock I might have. Not now.
I hope you don't mind, you know, it's ten thirty, I had to do a little joke, but that's all right.
No, that's quite all right, I, I, as you know, I like a sense of humor. So I'm fairly new to this, this project, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, but, you know, I looked through the minutes, I didn't watch the, the tape of last meeting on the thirteenth, although I, I must have missed, because it used to be your minutes were like fifty pages long, and now they were down to four, so kudos for that. They don't really have to be a transcript of the entire proceedings, but, but in any event, I, you know, I spoke to my client, and, and I spoke to Mr. Davis and Ms. Witten about the issues that were raised on the thirteenth, and I did speak to the Mark Serrato as well, I know that there was a request for some kind of opinion from him, I suspect that his opinion was given to you as part of your package for this evening, about the standing of the owner of the property, to sort of pick up this zone change ball and move it forward, should the, not, the, the project at one hundred Bright Meadow not go forward, so, and I, well, you can read his, his, I'm sure you're dead, it's very brief. So I just want to talk briefly about what I understand to be the, the major concern, which is we've got a less than four acre parcel, and we're asking this commission to rezone that from an R thirty-three, or, it's R thirty-three, I believe, zone, to the business regional zone, in order to accommodate the development of the Mass Mutual Campus adjacent to the property. And from what I understand, you raise legitimate concerns about how best to, if you were inclined to, to feel this is appropriate time to rezone this property, and we believe it is, how best to get that done so that it, it doesn't create a problem down the road if the Mass Mutual Project, or the, you still call yourselves All Sports Village, All Sports Village Project, which I'm very familiar with, the prior project was planned for, for Windsor Locks, and I'm the town attorney there, so I was very involved in, in that project there. I guess unfortunately for the town of Windsor Locks, it didn't work out, but, so you, you have Attorney Serrato's opinion, the documents I gave you today, we can start just very briefly with, there is an additional email from the owners of the property to supplement, I believe the email that was written to your town manager by them a few weeks ago, which was already in your packet, and basically, this is one of the things you were looking for, you know, them stating, I guess for the record, that they have no intention of having their property remain in a B R zone, excuse me, yeah, B R zone, should this deal not, you know, move to fruition. And so I know you're concerned about safeguards, so let, let me talk about that very briefly. First of all, the controlling entity as to what, any piece of property in town is zoned is you folks, so to the extent that the B R zone is laid on to this property, it's at some point in the future, I understand that staff is recommending an effective date, you know, well into the future, sometime in November, we don't have a problem with that, that'll give us times to, time to get our ducks in a row with respect to the Mass Mutual Property, get a site plan and special permit application in front of you, and, and deal with the, the properties as, as a whole. So that's one safeguard. The other safeguard for you to consider is, we will be required to file a zone change map with staff, and as we all know, having looked at the regulations, the minimum requirement for a parcel in the B R zone is five acres, this parcel standing alone does not meet that requirement, it falls short. So standing alone, no matter what the zone is, it would never qualify as for development under the B R zone, it just could not happen. So even if by some set of circumstances, you know, this, this property remained in the B R zone, or even got into the B R zone and this other project fell apart, no one could come in front of you and ask for an approval, they don't meet the requirements of the regulations. Now, so there will have to be an A two boundary survey showing the land that's being rezoned, and typically, I've done many of these, and in every case, there is a note put on that plan that says to be merged with, in this case, it'll say to be merged with property at one hundred Bright Meadow Boulevard. So that becomes part of the approval, and that'll be on that zone change map, that's going to be delivered to staff sometime in, in November, should the rest of the pieces fall into place. The other thing I handed to you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is several pages from a well-known three-volume treatise on Connecticut zoning law, written by Robert Fuller, Robert Fuller is considered to be the preeminent zoning authority in the state of Connecticut, he sat on the bench for many years, well, several years anyway, decided he didn't like being a judge, and went, went back to practicing, and that's all he does is practice zoning law. So he has been cited, his three-volume treatise has been cited by judges of the Superior Court, the appellate court, and this Connecticut Supreme Court, hundreds of times. So he's, he, and as I said earlier, he has gained a reputation as the preeminent zoning authority in the state of Connecticut. And just very quickly, I know the hour's getting late, so section twenty-two sixteen, which is the first page with any text on it, about halfway down, he's talking about applying conditions on certain types of applications. Twenty-two A sixteen, or twenty-two dash sixteen, talks about conditions imposed on applications in general, and he says that conditions which bring an application into conformity with existing regulations are usually valid. Then we can move on. The next section, twenty-two A, twenty-two dash seventeen, talks specifically about conditions on zone change applications and approvals. And the conventional wisdom is that they're not allowed because the statute doesn't allow for them, but the courts have, and as Justice, or Judge Fuller points out in his treatise here, the courts have allowed, in certain circumstances, for commissions to put conditions on zone change applications, all right? And one of the, the stigmas of zone, of conditions on things like zone change applications is they usually would try to apply them as to uses, and as you know, there's this thing called the uniformity principle, which says all uses with any particular zone must be uniform. So if you could put a condition as to uses, let's say, I'll give you the zone change, but you're limited to this use, that otherwise might be allowed in a zone in general, that would know, that would not be a valid condition, all right? But when you put a condition on something, you know, as a matter of make, or ensuring compliance with the particular requirements in the underlying zone, those things are traditionally held to be valid, i.e., in my view, a condition, if you were so choose, that would require us to put that note on the plan. Now, we're going to do it anyway, because to not leave it, to not put on the plan, it would, it doesn't make sense. So, you know, our first thing is, we're going to put that note on the plan that says, this must be merged with that property, and if it's not, the whole thing is invalid. If you want to secure that by putting that on as a condition, in my opinion, for what it's worth, I think you could do that as well, that the zone change would not be valid until and unless that property was officially merged in with the, the property next door. And if all else fails, again, you've, by, by the note that I gave you from the Farrars, you know, absent that, they don't, they don't want this, right? They want this because they're getting their property purchased for, for a fairly decent sum, and they're willing to do that, but, but if this thing falls apart, it doesn't, has no value to them, and it probably decreases their, their value as a R thirty-three property to have that, because the property, the house now becomes a non-conforming structure, and, you know, all the, you know, what happens with non-conforming structures, that they want to be changed, and all the rest of that.
That's up for debate, that part's up for debate.
Yeah.
But only because it's getting late, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, go ahead, I'm finished.
Would you be, you know, set of us, our sonographers, try to go back and put your thoughts and your opinion, which I am very much interested in?
Yeah.
Would you be willing to write us up something?
Of course.
So that we could have it going forward, so I guess you're, I'm already kind of implying that I'm not, I am not ready to vote tonight, but I would like to read your opinion, what you're giving us tonight.
Okay.
So that we, I can digest it, to be quite frank with you. I'm very interested in your, in your opinion, that's why, and what you gave me here.
I appreciate that.
Eleven o'clock at night, I'm not.
I understand that, too, so I'm duty-bound to ask you, is there any way I can change your mind and make a deal tonight? Can I put you in a new zone change tonight?
No.
I can't do that.
Not, not me personally, not me personally. I have to be honest.
Okay.
Not your fault.
Yeah.
Understood.
I mean, you've given us some good information here tonight, and I do want to take it.
Understood, yeah.
And I mean that sincerely.
No, I know you do, I know you do, sir. Absolutely.
But I didn't mean to interrupt you. But I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead, if you had.
No, no, I'm finished, I. Right. Yep. They're not ready to make a decision, is what they're saying. They need two more weeks, because they want me to do something for them, which I'm happy to do.
Because I have other notes here that doesn't conflict with your opinion.
Yeah.
But our difference of opinion of where you're coming from, so I very much am interested in your opinion, yes.
That's why I didn't just come here with Mr. Landolina's views, I came here with Judge Fuller's views.
Right.
So, the inference I take from this is that there are circumstances under which you can put conditions on a zone change. That's, that's all that that really stands for.
So, you can just summarize that for us up?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't mean to be interesting to everybody, but that's at least where I'm coming from, as your chairman. Are you done with your presentation for today?
I am.
Mr. Borja?
Good evening.
Yes.
One of my biggest concerns is.
You got to do for a record, and this is your name.
My name is Andy Borja, I represent Fast Track Realty LLC. One of the biggest concerns that we had at the last meeting was, you wanted to get, I guess, an opinion from the town attorney.
Yeah.
And he gave that. He said that, basically, "I am the applicant, and at the end of the day, if this project didn't go through, that the owner of the property, 113 Brainerd Road, Mr. Ferrara, would have to file a new application." And because his property does not meet the required acreage, he could never get an approval. And to be quite honest, you know, I was, you know, a little taken back by your comment last, two weeks ago, that you can offer a relaxation, a variance, or whatever, but in the same token, you said that, you know, you have the utmost concern for the community and the local residents, residential residents, that you wouldn't want to see a commercial piece of property in a residential area. And I respect that. But in the same token, you're saying that you could, you can give him a variance. So, why would you say you can give him a variance, and then in the same, Brett, you didn't want to give him?
I never mentioned giving him a variance, I'm sorry, you misunderstood me.
No, you said you could, you can give a relaxation, a relaxation.
I'm not going to debate this with.
I'm not here to debate, sir, and, and, and another thing is, you know, you guys dedicate your time here, you deserve the utmost respect, every one of you. But so are the people who are sitting here, deserve the respect for you to listen to them. You did say that, you absolutely did say that.
Say what, sir?
And you also said that, you know, regarding the property, I've been developing other properties for many years, sir, can I please finish, please?
I asked you a question, you said I stated something, I asked you, what did I state? Because I'm sitting here perplexed.
Well, you stated that, you know, I said to you that the property wasn't large enough to give it.
May I have a moment, please?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're all set.
Thanks, girl. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I do, I, I understand concerns, but I also understand from our town attorney that we can put conditions on this approval, that if it doesn't happen, nothing can be done. We did, Mr. Borja, did give us information that they're not, the, the landowners are not planning on applying for any kind of rezoning. Mr. Landolina has stated case law to us. I feel that we could move forward if we could put some kind of conditions, and in the motion, it says, "Effective date of rezoning shall be November 30th." And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, for whatever reason. So, I feel that we, as a commission, should move forward with this, with a decision. That's my opinion.
Okay. Let me, let me do one thing out of the way before we go on. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this application? I'm only going to do it once, because I'm not going to be foolish, there's no one here. I just wanted to check that off, so I don't forget to do that. Okay. Go ahead, other commissioners want to make some comments, why applicant's still here, go ahead.
Yes, in addition to what Commissioner DeGray said about the approval, would the plan be changed to say something about merging of the lots?
Yeah, that'll be a note on the plan, it has to be. It has to be there.
It's not on the plan yet.
No. When the final, when the final zone plan is created, to give to staff, it'll be on there. If you want to make that a condition, that's entirely up to you, but I'm telling you, it has to be there, otherwise it violates the zoning regulations.
Okay. The staff, is that something the town attorney says is acceptable, with that kind of condition on the plan?
Yes, I've had a conversation with Mark Serrato, and he said, yes, that would be.
But we don't have anything in paper from Mark stating so, and I'm not, I'm not disputing you had that conversation, and I respect Mark, in order my whole life, but we have nothing in paper.
So, but, it was, it was a conversation, and even without that, the, the standing of the, of the property owner, that he has no standing to file the application.
So, let me, let me go through this again, if I, if I may.
Sure, of course.
Didn't really want to do this tonight, but let me go through, let me go through it again, I'm going to state again.
Yeah.
What I stated, at least my position, is that we have to look at this zone change standalone. I don't care about Mass Mutual property, that might come in front of us, it might not, who knows?
Correct.
It's got to go through other commissions, I might never see it.
That's how, that's how you have to look at it.
Absolutely, thank you so much. So, to me, this is about, do I want to change this piece of property to business? Period is that. I don't know about the other stuff. I don't want to care about the other stuff, I don't even think the other stuff should even be in this application, because we don't know if it's going to happen. So, let me go again. So, if we vote to change this, we're, we're changing it theoretically, theoretically, as looking at changing this parcel to business, just this parcel. That's how you got to look at it, just this parcel.
With the requirement that it be merged.
Hopefully with some requirements that would hold up.
Yeah.
And I'm going to get there.
Yep.
So, and again, I'm not saying you're not doing this in good faith, I'm not applying this at all, so I go forward. And I really don't want to do this tonight, but I'm going to go. So, I just want everybody to be in that mindset. This is a, if you, if you decide to do this standalone, you can't be thinking about what, what might come down the road. We have no idea where it's going to come down the road. So, having said that, I'm going to go back and read what we have in our packet. Do you have, or do you, did you get our packet in front of us, what we have? Dated April 13th, do you have that?
I do.
Okay. So, I'm going to start right off, right underneath, "Application for Zone Change," okay? I'm going to start with that middle paragraph. "State statutes do not permit zoning commissions to place conditions on a rezone application. However, to add some confidence to the P&amp;Z, the owner is not the applicant, nor has stated any other claims regarding this application. Therefore, the owner has no standing to file this application on our behalf." There's a key word missing here, "unless challenged." Now, I'm going to go on to other reassurances for the P&amp;Z to include. I'm going to skip over item one, because I have nothing to comment on, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, sorry to drop, but in the pack, you're saying the April 13th package?
Yeah, do you have the dated, oh, I'm sorry.
Staff report.
I'm sorry, staff report. Oh, gosh, what is the date on it? Maybe you don't have it, Carl.
So, it's April 13th revised through April 27th?
Right.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah, I was looking at the 13th, but, yep, okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman.
No, please. I mean, you're, you weren't here last, the meeting, you're new to this, so take all the time you need, please.
Okay. You can go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
So, again, there was a key word there missing, "unless challenged." I'm going to skip over item one, because I have nothing to dispute that on. Item two, "The P&amp;Z may always take action to rezon this or any property anytime." Yep, yep, so we could zone this, and we could probably rezon it back. But that's, some people call zoning out from under them. And again, unless challenged, somebody can go to court and say, hey, you zoned it this, and now, you know, now you zoned it back to R-33? No, no. Again, up to the judge and jury. Then we go to applicant three. The applicant has stated they will submit an affidavit, an affidavit, and these things mean absolutely nothing. Nothing. It's nice, it's good, it's good spirit, and thank you so much, I mean, but in court, it means absolutely nothing.
Well, any decision you ever made can be challenged.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I can't, that's how lawyers like me make their living.
Absolutely, and not, and again, I'm not disagreeing, I just want to make that point.
Understood.
You know, I'm looking to do things that we don't possibly get challenged on, to be quite frank with you. So, and I think in this case, we're still wide open to this. And that's, and I really didn't want to go down this road tonight, because I really am interested in your opinion, if you could, you know, put that in paper, so I can digest it.
Okay.
I'm a bit confused.
Hold on a second, just, you know, all right, so as, does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, yeah. Kenny?
I do. I'm intrigued about this condition of requiring it be on the, the map, the requirement be on the map. Is that something that's legally defensible?
Yes.
So?
So, notes on a map, all right, are just like anything else on a map. Once that map is filed, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, you don't even have to put this as a condition, because once the note appears on the map, and, I'm telling you, it's going to be there, but if you want to tell me, you're going to require me to have it, that's fine as well, but once that goes on the, the map, it's, unless that, that, like, it's, like Dana had a thousand notes on his maps, right? Every one of those is a condition of that approval. So, as a condition of that approval, all the notes, all of the, every, every piece of information on that map is part of that approval. So, if you approve this zone change and require us to put a note on the map that the property shall be merged with 110, and it doesn't get merged, then, to me, the zone change doesn't become effective, because it doesn't, you know, it's like anything else on a map.
So, all right, so, so what if somebody, what if the thing falls through with the All Sports?
Mm-hmm.
The Ferraris sell it to somebody else, it's still business zone, right?
No, not until, not until the effective date in that map gets handed over. That's a condition of the approval.
So, what if it's not done before the effective?
If it's not done?
Yeah.
Then, that means that the project blew up, and that's it. We don't hand over the map, it never becomes effective. Handing over the zone change map is what makes it effective.
Exactly.
My biggest concern is that if the project, the entire project falls through, and believe me, I don't want it to happen, I think it's a good project, but, but if it doesn't fall through, or if it does fall through, then how do we prevent it absolutely right now from not being used as a business regional area by someone else?
It retains its status as an R-33 until the effective date and the map with the note on it is turned over to the town.
So, it's not either or?
It's both. Both have to occur.
And may I just add that the?
I want to see that legal paper, town staff. Okay, I'm sorry.
I just want to add to that, that the owner has no standing to file it, because the applicant would have to sign the map and.
Yeah, the map belongs to us.
Yeah.
Nobody else.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
But it sounds like that covers us, I mean, I don't know.
To be honest with you, I, I said, I, I'm much more intrigued now, tonight, than I was before the meeting, I'm just not in, ready to vote on that tonight. I mean, I want to see.
Can I have one more second?
Let me finish. I want to, I want to see your opinion, and then I want our legal staff to review his opinion and concur. And not that I don't trust Attorney Landolina at all, but I want to get another concurrence on it. This is, this is kind of the, the figuring out of all this is new tonight, and to be shudder honest, at five after 11, now, no fault of your own, because we had a big, busy night tonight, so it's not your fault that we're at five after 11 at all, believe me. You know, I'm just not ready tonight, I just want more time, I just need two more weeks, and get another, have staff review Mr. Landolina's comments and his way out of this, or way around this, and then maybe, I think, we'd be in a much better position.
Excuse me, sir, he just gave you his opinion. He just gave you his opinion.
I want it in paper.
And?
I want it in paper. That's all you need to know, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking you, in, in paper, just to say that his opinion is that he's, it's part of a merging, merging two properties?
Well, I'll ask our sonographer tomorrow to put this together, and she can give me, did you get Mr. Landolina's things minute by minute, sentence by sentence? Did you, and I hate to put the burden on you, but since the applicant is now getting a little snippy with me, can you give me that?
Sir?
Tomorrow.
I'm not getting snippy.
Stop, please stop.
I'm just, I'm just commenting on your comments, sir, that's all. You know, time is the essence for me, and, you know, another two, we just waited two more weeks, and now you're asking for us to wait another two weeks, and we have a due diligence period.
Mr. Chairman, if I might put an end to this.
Thank you.
So, perhaps, if you, someone makes a motion to close the public hearing, and if it doesn't get passed, we'll know where we stand? Because I don't want you to vote tonight, if, you know, I want to know, in other words, if, I would assume, again, just in a hypothetical world, if there's a motion on the floor to close a public hearing, there'll be some who will not be in favor of that, doesn't mean they're not in favor of the application, they need more information. If there's a majority of you who want to close the public hearing, that would give me an indication that you're willing, those people are willing to decide, and I'm going to go on some assumption that those folks would, would probably vote in favor, but I, you know, I don't know until, so, because I don't want you to have a motion on the floor to approve or not approve, because I, you know, I need a majority of those.
Yeah.
Of the entire commission, which, which would be a majority anyway, but, so.
If we close the public hearing, you can't give us any information after this.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
Which is, the chairman is asking for more information.
And I'm willing to give it.
And more reassurance.
Yeah, I hate to do that.
Yeah, well, okay.
Thank you for the offer, yeah.
I, I, no, I'm just, you know, one of the things we do is we count.
Yeah.
As lawyers, we say, okay, you know, maybe, maybe that's a yes, maybe that's, so, but, it's your prerogative, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, my client is very anxious, as he's expressed.
Yep.
You know, but, but, you know, you have 35 days to close the public hearing.
Yeah. And actually, my, my intent really, my intent was not to actually ask to close the public hearing, I'm not sure the rest of the commissioners want to do, because I wanted to keep having this dialogue, not close it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
And, you know, good intentions.
Absolutely, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing, of course. I got a little excited when I heard two people express a different view, but.
To the chairman, to staff.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that we can put a condition of an effective date of November 30th, only if the site plan is approved. Would that, would I be correct in that, or am I not correct?
No, 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 that's, so, so the effective date is, because they're trying to do their due diligence.
I understand what they're trying.
So, so the effective date would be for the map amendment to be approved. The map itself would have to be filed, and then the effective date would actually change the zone. If they get to that point, and the due diligence, and they've decided, we're not going to go anywhere, they just won't file the map, and it becomes a moot point, it becomes void.
And the map comes to you to be filed, to the plan.
Absolutely.
So.
Right, and we can, as a condition, we can see that map and see that this, this property, 113 Brainerd Road, must be merged with the Mass Mutual site.
It doesn't just like bypass you, it goes directly to the plan.
No, it's just like every other application, we, no, I just want to say, we always review those maps, we review them with the conditions of approval, and we review them for whatever other requirements there might be.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I could add one more, one more thing, Chairman DeGray, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner DeGray.
That's okay.
Obviously, our expectation is that well before November 30th, we're going to be in here with a special permit and a site plan application, right? And you're going to have, as part of that 20 pages of maps, the zone change map, which is going to have that note on it, when it comes before you in July, June, or whenever, you know, whenever it's done. So, you'll see that well in advance, and, and if, if you don't approve that part of it. And, and if, if you don't approve that part of it, that'll be part of that package as well, so.
And just, just for one more clarification, the applicant, the owner has no right to file that map.
Yeah, yeah, we know that. Yep. We got that. But I guess I'm still, again, I'm just going to, I'm going to lay it out, trying, trying to do what you're trying to do in the same way.
Yeah.
And I understand the applicant, you know, wanting us to proceed quickly. I, I do get it. I do understand. Not saying I agree, but I do understand. But I still would like us to table this for two more, one more meeting. Till next meeting, I want to get Mr. Landelina's suggestions in paper so I can digest it and pass it on to our, our legal staff so they can give us an opinion on it, see if they concur. And they probably will. I'm, you're a good attorney. But I would be much more comfortable if we did it that way instead of voting tonight. I just feel like I'm being rushed into something where I'm not ready to vote tonight. And, you know, I mean, I'm pretty diligent here, so if I feel that way, it's for a reason. So I'm, I'm asking that, again, we keep the public hearing open
Mm.
because we still want to have, we want to have the, I don't want to close the dialogue.
Yeah.
But we table it again till, to, to the next meeting. That, I guess as a chairman, I'm, I'm putting that motion out on the table. And I'm wondering if there's a second for discussion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Petronella. There was a motion made by the chairman, took that privilege to table this so we get some more legal opinion to digest, and it's been seconded by Secretary Petronella. I'll, as in favor of tabling this for the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Come on.
The records show that it was six to one to table this for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm, I'm really looking, and I mean it sincerely, I'm looking forward to that.
I'll, I'll work with staff and the town attorney to give you exactly what it is you need.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Can I make a, I can't call it a point of privilege, but
Please.
just an observation.
Please.
I know that your agenda is dictated, I think, by language in the charter, but it seems, well, let's just say, in many towns that I deal with, old business usually comes ahead of new business.
Changed that.
We're going to do it tonight right after you're done.
Okay, thank you. Because I don't want to be here at
So next time
11 o'clock in two weeks.
So we are changing that right after we're done.
Because Dana, you know what he's like.
Yeah. And I understand he has a long ride home, so we understand that. So we're changing our agenda tonight, so that won't happen again.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I think it's going to pass.
I don't, I think we're all set.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you had the paperwork done very early, that'd be good for a review by the town attorney.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be in staff's hands well in advance.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for staying so late.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on. I believe that PH 3001 is, we're not even going to take it off the table. The applicant had to leave, so that's going to go on. I don't think we physically have to table that. 3001 for 40 Edgewood Drive will be carried over to the next meeting. Also, Flood 45 is going to be tabled, you know, basically tabled, and going to carry that over to the next meeting also. I don't think we have to do anything on that either. Old business, other business. Item A, the discussed state mandated affordable housing plan, that's just, guys, that's just a tickler here, so we keep it on our agenda. Hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to actually start discussing that next meeting. Okay? Because we do have to adopt that and get that to the state. We're one of, what, Lori, what, maybe 20 towns that doesn't have one filed yet?
Yes.
Yeah? Commissioner Magister?
Right. I was asking if there was a deadline, and I guess we are part of the 20 towns. So is there a date, drop dead date for?
Oh, like five years ago.
Yeah. Yeah. So we don't want to, and, and they're starting to pay attention to that now. So if you see, that's why I didn't want to add it, they're starting to pay attention to that, so we don't want to be, we don't want to prolong that any longer. So Lori and Matt are going to be working that out. We'll start that process hopefully next meeting on that. We also had an agenda change, an item added here to look at our, and I got to, give me a second to get over there. I know it's getting late, everybody.
Turn it over.
Yeah, I got to turn it around. To our rules
I believe they did not do that.
for conducting our meetings. And as you saw, Attorney Landelina brought up a good point, and actually, staff did too tonight. Oop, I got to turn it around. Thank you. Basically, when you look at Section 1, Order of Business, I know you guys don't have it in front of you, Article X, "We do old business after new public hearings and before new business." I would like to have a motion made that we amend Section 1 of our articles so that old business comes before new business. They
Old public hearings is what we were, if you don't mind me.
I don't even have old public hearings listed here.
Right. That's what I said, I thought it was.
Nope, nope, I don't have it in, in our Section 1. I have call the order, fire evacuation, roll call, approval in minutes, town attorney report, executive session as needed, zoning enforcement's report, public participation, bond releases, oh, continued public hearings.
So they used to call it continued.
Yeah, so that's the difference. It is already here.
Yes, see?
Item 10, instead of old public hearings, it should be
Continued.
continued public hearings.
Then it can be above new.
And then it's item automatically after bond releases, all the time.
Yep.
Is that?
What about, you typically act on public hearings in the same night, so it might not be an issue, but what about public hearings that are closed, haven't been continued, but they're
So change continued to old in the book, in our bylaws.
Yeah.
We know what you mean.
Right. So let me, let me, let me entertain a motion to do that. So old, continued slash old public hearings can go before new public hearings, starting next meeting.
So moved.
So a motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, in our bylaws to change item 10 from continued public hearings to old public hearings.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, unanimous that that is now old, and that stops that confusion. Okay, thank you for that. Enforcement reports.
I don't have anything at this point.
Correspondence. We did, all of us, and I want to mention again, I know it's getting late, I, I know all of us received an email about the past public hearing we just had. Again, you shouldn't have read it, you should not do anything, please don't respond back to that person. I saw the mail list, I saw, we all got it. I think it went to staff. If not, I will give it to you. I did not read it, but I did print it out only because I want to mention in public that please do not send commissioners' emails of open items, especially items that the public hearing is open. We cannot read them, we cannot respond to you, and basically, you are doing the community a disservice by sending us those directly. Please, if you have to send anything of that nature to the public, that's why I'm doing this, send it to staff. It is against the law for us to comment on those because everything has to occur here, especially when the public hearing is still open. So I will give you this, and I didn't, you know, so next month, it could go, next meeting could be put in the, in the minutes, but I wanted to say that for the, for the benefit of the public. We're not being snooty or snotty, I've said this numerous times, when, especially when it's an open public hearing, we really cannot com, or communicate with you about anything. Commissioners' correspondence. I just did that. Anybody else have any commissioners' correspondence? Director Planning Report.
Not much to report right now. I've been attending sessions to the 2023 National Planning Conference yesterday, today, and all day tomorrow.
All right.
So
Lucky you.
On a learning curve.
Some of us did the housing, and I know that I did the affordable housing.
And I wanted to do that.
Most of us did it last night. Yeah, it was very good. Good timing, because we'll be hopefully picking up about that. I did have a question for you while you're here. Yep.
Just real quick, please let us know that you took that
Yep.
sent it to Jen McKenzie, so we can log it into the books. Sorry.
That's okay. No, absolutely. POC update, I just, I know I'm going to sandbag you here, and I apologize, but I just want, based on my calculations, we have to, the effective date, March, we've, we made it effective on March 30th. That was that Thursday night when we voted with all the amendments. Which means on April 30th, the approved plan must be posted on the town's website and given to Sheila in the town clerk's office.
Mm-hmm.
The completed version with all the changes in, in the maps, the mapbook, all of that has to be done in what, three days?
I think in, in May 30th, I thought it was. It was May 30th.
It's a May 30th.
Why, no. No, 30, 30 days after adopting, and we adopted it on March 30th.
Yeah, correct.
So on April 30th, it has to be, on April 30th, by 30 days after adoption, the approved plan or sections thereof must be posted on the town's website and in the town clerk's office. So that's the completed version with the mapbooks and everything, needs to be there by April 30th. And by 60 days, which is May 30th, that's when it has to be submitted to the Secretary Office of Policy and Management. Sorry. I just wanted to mention it. So I don't know, I, I know you guys are really under the gun, so I'm certainly prepared to go see any higher-ups who might need to see to get extra help to get it done, if so need be. That was my point when I wanted to bring it up, to be quite frank with you.
Yeah, I have an email out to, to Don Poland at this point, so.
Yeah, so we kind of want to get close to the dates we're supposed to get to, if possible. Is there any applications that we need to mention to us?
One we received, one we received, I think it's listed on the agenda, and it'll probably be done administratively, it's just a small, minor change to Eppendorf
Yes.
concrete pad, little expansion of some of their silos and things like that. We can have them come in if you want, but we think it's so de minimis that we'd like to do it administratively.
And I think we already did that once before with Eppendorf, the same thing with the silos that came up this time last year, I think, or about.
Same exact location, I think, to just expanding it a little bit.
Is there anything else that you guys, Commissioner DeGray?
Just one quick thing, is on the agenda on the website, it listed 161 Post Office Road as an application, but it didn't give a description on what it was. What, what is that?
That's
Subdivision.
That's the resubdivision out next to JFK.
Okay.
Had come in, had been withdrawn.
Oh, okay.
They had to go to the council. Council didn't accept their open space. They're going to probably do a conservation restriction instead of a fee in lieu or a dedication. So that'll come to you, probably second meeting in May.
Okay.
No, it's just I'm just curious, where did you see this?
It was on, when
As, as, as the application to be received?
Yeah, receipt of application, yeah.
Oh, so you're just saying there, there wasn't any description?
No, yeah, they just
I see.
And I'm like, what's going on now?
Okay.
Okay, okay.
There's always something going on.
Yeah.
Public hearing signed on that property, I think.
Yeah.
A week or so ago, right?
Yeah.
On the corner.
That was for the concessions yet.
No.
No, no. No.
This is the resubdivision right next to the school.
So he's already got a sign up?
Oh.
They may have.
Yeah, you might, he might, he might already have a sign up.
Maybe it's for the, they need a Wetlands app. I don't think there's a hearing for the Wetlands app.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right.
Just going to Wetlands.
Subdivision.
Okay.
Whatever.
Just wondering. Thank you.
Anything else you guys want to talk about tonight?
No.
No, no, I'm talking to staff.
So is this the only thing we have?
Patriots gave up a number four, right? Choice.
Is this the only?
I thought I was going to make it home and at least see who the Giants drafted tonight, but not, not, not to be, not to be. Yeah. Any, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
The motion made to adjourn by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray. All those in favor, signify, say aye. This meeting was closed at 11:25. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.